Welcome, everybody, to the February 2nd, 2021 zoning meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I am your ringmaster, Rob Rosa. I would entertain a motion to open the public meeting.
I will make that motion, open the public meeting.
I got a motion, second?
I'll second it.
I got a second roll call. We're gonna go with main members here. I got myself, yes, Mr. Hessian.
Yes.
Mr. Tanzy.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
And Mr. Baker Jr., where are you?
I'm right here.
All right, so we got all five. First and foremost, I just want to go over some rules of the meeting. This is, I know we've got a lot of, I know we've got a lot of people here to speak, from the general public that want to speak about this. Based on the last meeting, and one person getting a little bit of, a little bit out of line. Here's the deal. If I find that anybody is getting out of line, you will be bounced, and you will not be allowed back into this meeting. I need the, I need everybody to understand that. This is a very... Both applicants that are on tonight are very controversial, and I understand that. But again, anybody that gets out of line, you're gone. That being said, I'm going to read the legal advertisement. Right here, remotely conducted, we're gonna, because Mr. McGee is not, is not available right now, we're gonna go, we're gonna start in with Shingle Mill. Remotely conducted continuance public hearing on the petition filed under Chapter 40B comprehensive permit by Shingle Mill LLC. Care of Conoco, 41st Street, Bridgewater, Mass., 023, you know, 02324, to allow the construction of 236 units of residential housing. The project within two five-story buildings on approximately 29.33 acres of land located at Zero Pond Street and 152 Wilson Street. The site, the applicant is proposing 25% of the units to be classified as affordable per MGL Chapter 40B. The site is located on Zero Pond Street, Lot 13, Map 9, and 152 Wilson Street, Lot 68, Map 10. Copy this application materials, plans, and other documents are available upon request electronically from the town clerk by dialing that number. Press 1 for the town hall, then extension, okay, whatever. All right, where, where is Mr. Andronico? Where'd you go, sir?
Right here, can you, can you hear and or see me?
There we go, how you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad. How's your team tonight? We got everybody?
We've got everyone, I've got my design team on and engineering team on, as usual. And in addition, we have on Jeff Engler, who we've brought on as our kind of 40B consultant to help us with the remainder of this project. As well as Mark Vaughn is our, the attorney representing Joan Street Residential is also joining us this evening.
All right, welcome, everybody. I appreciate you taking the time out for, for the applicant, thank you very much. Let's see, I have Mr. Galvin, who's Attorney Galvin, who's usually here. He sent me a, he sent me a little bit of, kind of what he sees as a, as some organization for this meeting. I'd just like to go over this real quick. Let's see. Mr. Andronico, got any updates for us?
I have a couple of pieces of information. All right, so I, can everyone hear me all right? I've unmuted myself.
Yeah, I got you.
Great, great. All right, so I thought where we had left it last time, we had presented our responses to the last com, the last batch of comments. And then we were awaiting some further commentary from the town regarding a peer review for the financial analysis that we provided. We've not yet received anything and haven't heard anything. So we assume that a consultant has not yet been engaged. So we don't have anything else to present aside from some additional or a re-presentation of some of the information that we thought might be beneficial to some of the butters who are on in the board as well regarding our soils management plan. I know that that was a, a hot topic in the last call. So we thought we might put together a very simple presentation to kind of further explain the steps in the process that we are proposing to bring in the fill that has been noted on our set. So with that said, I believe Matt Abraham from Ty and Bond, our geotechnical engineer, is on the line. And he has, again, a very brief presentation, which really just kind of walks through that process. So if you think it'll serve this meeting, we thought we might just present that, maybe bring some further clarity to that particular issue.
Good. All right, Matt, are you on?
I am, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, board. I just, I just jumped back on after our interruption. So I think I caught the gist of it. So I'll pull up the presentation, let me know if you can see it. So is it showing?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So essentially, we spoke a little bit about it last meeting. And I just figured if we could pull a slide together that kind of walked through the steps that might help address some of the concerns. So essentially, it's, you know, a two-phased approach. I mean, we identify a construction site that's ongoing that has excess fill that they need to manage off-site. And obviously, as we know, our site is a fill site and will be accepting excess soil. So if we can batch, we can help, you know, import soil from a cut site to ours. And essentially, this next slide just walks through the steps. Hopefully, it's large enough on the screen for everybody to see. But that first slide up on the upper left is, you know, the, the source location identifies that they have extra fill that needs to be managed. The environmental consultant that would be working for the property owner of that particular site would collect representative soil samples of the material that would be generated that they need to remove. Those samples would then go to a third-party independent laboratory. So it's a laboratory that does not work for the LSP or the owner of that site. And the lab also does not work for Ty and Bond or anybody from Joan Street or anybody involved with the Pond Street development. Once the data from those samples is produced, they would compile an acceptance package and submit it to Ty and Bond on behalf of Joan Street. We would review that data, at which point we would say, you know, one of two options exist. Either the site that they've tested is either contaminated or it's structurally unsuitable. For whatever reason, we don't approve that soil to be imported. So then that, that stops that process altogether, that soil doesn't come to the site. The other option would be they've tested the soil, it's clean soil, it's better soil than currently exists from both environmental and a, you know, structural standpoint. So once we've reviewed that, we've made that determination that it's clean fill, then we would agree to accept that material. At which point, the owner of the cut site would arrange transportation to Pond Street, obviously in accordance with the, you know, whatever standards are set for trucking, the time restrictions, that sort of thing. Once that soil arrives, we would be on-site to review the material as it's brought in. There's a multi-faceted sort of screening approach to accepting that soil once it's there. So the first piece, we've already approved, which was the hard analytical data. The second piece is the trucks get visually inspected. They also get field screened, which would be a real-time reading for, you know, potential contamination in that soil. If it passes both the visual and the field screening, then that material is, is free to be added to the site. If for some reason, you know, either visually or the field screening method doesn't pass muster, then, you know, we could choose to either segregate that soil and we could conduct our own testing. Or we could say, hey, you know what, doesn't pass the sniff test here, we're not going to take this soil. The soil doesn't get used at Pond Street, and it gets transported back to the site of generation. So that's the general lay of the land for how we would, you know, review and accept soil to be imported to Pond Street. So at that, I mean, at this point, I can open it up to questions or, you know, leave that slide up for people to look at, however the board wants to, to move forward.
The update, the update is, is good. I think we can come back to that, because again, I know people are going to want to start asking questions. And there's a couple of other things that I kind of wanted to, to talk about. Mr. Andronico, is there anything else that you wanted to bring to the table at this point for new, for new business?
We did want to present the rendering of the view from Wilson Street, which was the other item that was requested during the last hearing.
If you want to do that, that's probably, that's, this is a good time for that.
Okay, so I can, I can probably pull that up if you just give me one brief moment. Matt, you may need to un, unshare your screen.
My computer just froze.
All right, I might be able to just overtake your screen. Let me, yeah, it says you cannot start a screen share while others are, okay. Let me try now, looks like you've been able to do it.
And I need a three finger salute, control, alt, delete. There we go.
Let me know if you folks can see this.
I know I have that.
Okay. So this is, no, I, there's really not a lot to talk about, but this is the view from Wilson Street. This over here on the left is representative of the, of the, of the residents that will be next to the parking area. And you can see that we have the screening that is proposed along the parking area. You can see up in the, up in the background there, I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but you can see the fire gate. And then over to the right, you can see the clubhouse. And in the distance, you can see the top of what would be, I believe, the L building. So this is the view, and I don't know if there are any questions or comments, but we think this is a pretty realistic representation of what that view may look like.
It looks good to me. Is there anything else you wanted to present?
No, no, no other material to present tonight.
All right, if you, there we go, very nice. Mr. Taylor, Dave Taylor, are you, were you able to make it back on? Let's see. Do, 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 do. I think.
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm here, sorry.
Dave, no, it's all good, I appreciate you, I really appreciate you showing up here. Because there, there's a couple of things that I know, I know a lot of people need to hear. You are, you are representing both the sewer department and the highway department tonight, is that correct, sir?
Well, I, I am limited capacity as far as the sewer department, obviously, because that's more or less falls on the commissioners, so.
Okay.
But I do represent the highway department, so.
Can you do me a favor? And I'm, I'm assuming that you've had, again, I'm only assuming here, that you've had enough time to look at the latest round of edits from the applicant. Does highway have any major concerns at this point with the newest plant set?
Well, I know you forwarded me the plans, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago on that, Rob. So we, we, I mean, we still have concerns, I know we, the Wilson Street aspect of it. So I know we, originally, we talked about like a, a snow zone or a drop zone anywhere, because where that's a dead end. And then I know we were in talks with, you know, getting the roads done over, that was Wilson, Colby, Curry, and Wright. And then, you know, we also have drainage concerns over on, because Colby, Wright, obviously, those are low lying, low, low topography areas. So we, you know, we had concerns over there as far as the drainage. And I know we were in talks originally with, with Rick Lincoln and Ernesto about maybe adding some sort of addendum or amendment, you know, just so we could make sure those concerns are viable, like in a few years down the road. You know, after, after the project is already, you know, on its way, you know, we don't want to leave the residents, there's already drainage concerns there now. You know, obviously, we don't want to cause, you know, flooding or drainage. I know there's a lot of onsite subsurface drainage, you know, that was updated, you know, to try to amend that. So I just want to make sure, you know, on the, on the resident's standpoint, that, you know, we, you know, those concerns aren't done, you know, from like, you know, we get done with this development, and then that's it, you know, we, you know, we want to make sure down the road that we're all set for those people. And then also, as far as the traffic, I know we talked about, I think you, I mean, you've received some letter from Nick Ziole on the police department. And I know we, we talked about the pedestrian flow down there, that there needs to be something done, you know, with the pedestrian flow, pedestrian safety. You know, linking that up, maybe with Turner Road, not with Hingham Street. I know originally, we talked about Hingham Street, but with the Mass DOT, they don't want any linkage over to Hingham Street, because they never foresee any future of a crossing from Hingham Street from Pond Street over to the parking lot. So, and then I think that, you know, the drainage concerns, you know, the traffic concerns. I know we originally talked about widening the lane out there, the in and out of that development, maybe down to the long water. Because that's, obviously, that's a bottleneck as it is, and there was a traffic study done in 2017, you know, which was in, with Mass DOT and in, you know, highway, also police and fire over this way. And I, and I know Rick Lincoln and the developers, they, they did, they did have that in hand at the beginning stages of this. So I just want to make sure, that's, that's a concern, obviously, with traffic, you know, entering onto pedestrian, you know, pedestrian safety. You got long water up to Hingham Street. So that's already an issue with the collaborative school, and also you have South Shore Medical Center. So there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of that area, and we want to just make sure, you know, that's, that's all met, you know, you know, as far as that goes, so.
That's understood, I appreciate your, I appreciate your candor, sir. Can you, can you speak to anything that has to do with sewer tonight? I know it's limited. One of the biggest, one of the biggest questions that everybody seems to have is, is the capacity there, this, that, the other thing? And I know that, I know that you really, and there's not a lot you can speak on, I know that at this point. I just, we need to, we, I guess the town needs some sort of assurance that if this does go through, that it is going to work, somehow, some way, it is going to work. Is there anything that you can speak on that?
Well, I can explain the capacity, the capacity issue in a, in a limited response. So there's, there's, there's two different types of capacity. There's, there's plant capacity at the plant, and then there's also capacity out in the field, which is, you know, related to structures and, you know, sewer piping, you know, services. So the, the town, the town's infrastructure, I'm sure, where the residents understand, you know, everything is antiquated. You know, it's just, we have old, old, old subs, old infrastructure, sorry about that. So, you know, the drainage down in that area is rough, and also the sewer is rough, it runs parallel with it. So obviously, there's, there's probably a high INI in that area in itself, you know, just like there is through town. I mean, just, you know, just going over what we had over the summer, I mean, we, we have a rolling average down at the plant at 2.5 million gallons a day. And then when we had the drought over the summer, obviously, it was 1.5 million gallons a day. So it gives you a more of a, you know, more of a reading, a steady reading of what we should be operating at. You know, when we get into, you know, high rain season and high inflow, we have, you know, a tremendous amount of water entering the sewer system, you know. And I, and I think Chuck and, you know, get here to that, that we, you know, we go up to four to five million gallons a day because of inflow. So there's, there's, there's room out in, in the infrastructure to gain more capacity out in that field. And I know that area, you know, we're looking at French Road and Turner Road, the drainage over there is old, you know, we're looking at updating that, that area. If the drainage is old, the sewer is old, and, you know, there's obviously a lot of infiltration. And it's not just our town, it's, you know, it's, it's every town around us, everybody's in that for the last, you know, 30 to 40 years. And, you know, one way to gain some of that is, you know, by development. You know, I'm on, I'm not in support of it, of the development either way, but I'm, I'm supportive, you know, the town, you know, getting monies from a, you know, from a development and helping us, you know, down the road where we can, you know, get some of that, that INI taken care of and helping us with capacity issues. That's, that's just me. Again, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm in limited capacity as far as that, I'm just serving as interim. You know, the commissioners make the major decisions down there. But, you know, as a, as a concerned resident of any large development, you know, we want, the only way you're ever going to amend a situation like that is by the development. I don't know if this is the right development, or if it's not. I mean, I leave that, you know, you know, up to the zoning board and the, the other parties involved in it, so. I hope that helps, I'm sorry, I'm not running, if I'm.
Oh, no, Mr. Mr. Taylor, that, that helps kind of immensely. The, because again, the question is capacity. And I don't think, and I don't think anybody on the board thinks that the applicant should be responsible for increasing the capacity of the sewer plant, because I don't think there's enough money from the, this, I don't think there's enough money to be able to do that. But did you, I, I don't remember, I, I, I don't remember, and I know we've talked about this before, but have you, you've got, through the, through the sewer commission? And maybe Mr. Andrew, Mr. Andronico, you can speak to this too. Have you guys talked about some sort of mediation when it comes to, not necessarily the plant itself, but the, basically, the capacity in the field like Mr. Taylor was talking about? Have you guys talked about this?
What I can speak to is, if you, if you refer to the, to the September 29th letter that we received from the sewer department, it listed several conditions of approval, one of them being confirmation of capacity, which is a bit of a circular reference, being that it came from the sewer department, which is something I think we need some clarity on, and how do we get to that confirmation? But on the last page of that, they summarize, in essence, the contributions that we would be required to make, which we're fully prepared to make. Of that is, you know, 1.1 million dollars of development fee, $11,000 sewer tie-in fee, almost $400,000 of INI, and $150,000 of improvements to the existing pump station, which brings it to, you know, a 1.7 million dollar contribution, which is by no stretch of the imagination is meaningless. So I suppose to answer your question is, there, there is, there is certainly an accounting for the contribution that this development could make for the town infrastructure.
Mr. Taylor, can you confirm everything that Mr. Andronico said?
Yes, that, that is, that is spot on on the general agreement that we agreed to at the, at the sewer commissioner meeting.
All right, so when it comes to, when it comes to the sewer, can we say that we're good at this point?
Well, I mean, we, we deferred that to the zoning board. We wanted to have that out there as far as a, a general agreement on that.
Okay.
Because there is a moratorium with the town, so there is an 11 to 1 ratio. And we have an INI study getting done in February. So they were, so the developer was looking to hop on that and replace that INI where, where we need to be. So that, that, that is in place as far as, as in a, an agreement from the sewer department, so.
Okay, so I just did, again, as we go on, I just want to make sure that every department has had their say. Mr. Baker Jr., yes?
Yeah, and having come in late in this process, your question may have already been answered at earlier meetings. But do we have anything from the sewer commission that says that either the infrastructure or the plant or both handle the anticipated outflow from this development?
Mr. Andronico?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear that last part, forgive me, Mr. Baker.
Yeah, has anything come from the sewer, sewer commission saying that either the infrastructure or the plant or both can handle the anticipated outflow from this development?
And remember, he didn't come in very late, so he doesn't have a lot.
Yeah, no, absolutely, sure. Yeah, the answer to that question is no, unfortunately. And I think that's really the piece of information that we're so desperate to get our hands on as well. And in fact, it's item number one of their condition, their recommended conditions of approval. Is that, and I'll read it, I actually have it up, it says that the town of Rockland Sewer System, which is being managed under an EPA administrative consent order, have the capacity or be able to improve by the town of Rockland to have the capacity to accept the sewer from the proposed project of Zero Pond Street, Rockland, Mass. So we, and from where I stand, I'm, I need the sewer commission to give me that answer.
Mr. Andronico, can I ask you to please reach out to the sewer department personally, to get on their agenda, to make this determination?
Yes, I'm happy to do that, but I think it's worth noting that we, we've, we've sat in front of the sewer commission several times and have not been able to get that answer. We've also, and it seems like perhaps Mr. Galvin isn't on this call, we've reached out to Mr. Galvin as well, and he had committed to helping us try to get some clarity to that particular issue as well. So the answer is, of course, we will, we will, you know, we will redouble our efforts in trying to get that answer. However, I'm concerned that we might end up here the same time next month with the same question. And I'm just not sure if this, if there's something that, that the sewer commission needs from me to help them make that determination. We're more than happy to provide it, we're anxious to provide it, but I'm not, I'm not sure what it is that's holding up that answer.
Okay.
But we can certainly try to re-engage them, but we've done that several, in several different avenues already.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a follow-up question to Mr. Andronico?
Please do, sir.
If at some point, this is a hypothetical, but if at some point the sewer commission says no, either the infrastructure or more significantly, significantly the plant cannot handle the outflow, what is your alternative?
My alternative, my alternative would be a pre-treatment system, which is, you know, obviously, it's impactful to my project. And also, it's, you know, 1.7 million dollars if the town doesn't get furniture. So I don't think that either side of the fence, regardless of your feelings of the project, I don't, that, that doesn't seem like the best end game, but that, that would be the alternative.
And when you say pre-treatment system, what do, what do you refer?
It's in essence, a septic.
He's talking a giant septic system right next to our water supply.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's the problem.
Which, which, none of us, I don't think anybody wants.
No, no. I'd like to address the fact that you guys did go, you did have a meeting with the, with the water department, correct?
We did, we'd have several meetings with the water department, and we just recently got their kind of list of fees. So we're reviewing that, and we're basically, the, the message that we're getting, although unofficial, it seems as though the capacity won't be an issue, or we don't have any kind of official notification of that, that I'm aware of, but they did send us over their fee schedule, so we're reviewing that now. And we were able to get an audience with them. So coordination has picked back up in regards to the Abington-Rockland Water Commission.
All right, so obviously, we still needed, we still need a yay or a nay from the water department as to whether they can, whether they can handle this, that's number one. The sewer department, you are, or the sewer commission, rather, you're going to have to go, we're going to have to keep that dialogue going, because we're going to need something from them that says it's a yay or a nay. Or that the, the, basically, the mitigation, the money that's been talked about is going to cover it. So somehow, some way, we need a, we kind of need a sign-off. Mr. Mr. Tanzy?
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. So wouldn't it be, to my knowledge, wouldn't it be typical for the ZBA to grant an approval? Should that be, this, you know, should that be where we land on this condition to, very, you know, coordination with the sewer and water commission rather than waiting on those approvals? Because it sounds like, and Mr. Taylor, maybe you can tell me if I'm wrong, it sounds like the sewer commission specifically is waiting on a ZBA approval to issue their approval, and I'm, I'm afraid that we're in a bit of a game of ping pong.
No, it sounds like a catch-22, and we've done that in the past, we have done, we have, we've done conditions like that in the past. I, we can entertain that at the, I think we, we should entertain that at the next meeting. I don't believe that we're going to be making a decision, a decision tonight. So I, I think we need one more, at least, everybody needs one more attempt, department-wise, the water, the sewer, most specifically, to basically voice their opinion. The board is more than willing to, is more than willing to entertain. Putting it in as conditions. But I'll be honest, I personally would rather hear this, I would rather hear. The water department say yay or nay. I would rather hear the sewer department say yay or nay. And I think you, and as applicant, I think you would want to know that too going into this.
I mean, I'd love, I'd love to have the thumbs up across the board, of course.
Right. So, and that's, and that's the only reason why I'm doing this because again, if we throw it in as a condition and they turn around and say no. And that kind of, kind of screws things up for everybody. So that's why I'm kind of being a stickler on this. Um, Mr. Mr. Taylor also brought up some good points from the, from the highway department end. Uh, yeah, that is a dead end road. So the town is going to be, uh, and the, the, the town plows that road. And unfortunately, the end of that road is where all that snow ends up. I mean, it, it follows onto the sides. But it still does, a, a, a good amount of it does end up all the way at the end of the road. And I guess the big question is, is A. What are we going to do about that? Um, that is, and it is, it's while it's a minor consideration at this point. Um, based on the snow that we do get, uh, it's, it's a consideration that we have to look at. Um. You know, we can't, the town really can't block the way because it is an emergency access. And because you have, because you have a piece of property that is on Wilson. We can't just block it. But it is, it's, it's not like it's a, it's not like it's a cul-de-sac. You know, and with a cul-de-sac, you can push it kind of up on the sides and you're not too worried about it. But with this, it's a dead end road. Um. How do we do it? How do we address that?
We could certainly look, um, at our site plan and determine whether we can find some kind of snow storage accommodation that we could make.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we can certainly study that. I mean, it's, this is the first time it's been brought up. So, you know, we don't, we've not studied that yet, but we can certainly look into that. And may, and perhaps make some recommendation how we might.
That emergency gate, not to interrupt, but that emergency gate, uh, the key for that emergency gate or the code or whatever it is. Would that be available to the highway department just in case they had to, again, we don't want to block access. You know, and we don't want to turn around and because again, if, if memory serves, your, um, your clubhouse building. Is going to be down into the right of the, you know, of Wilson Street. So it's not like we can just push it up there either. Um. Would we, would the, would the town have access to that gate to be able to open that and at least push the snow in and push it to the side and be done with it?
And Rob, Rob, if you would, uh, we, we would, we wouldn't want access to the gate.
Okay.
Yeah, we would be looking for, so we, we just did the same thing with Lydia Square over at the end of Norman Street.
Mm-hmm.
They've, uh, so what we've done is it's, it's more or less a, a, a snow zone or a drop zone for snow storage. And you know, we, we, we require them as, as part of, of our drainage. In town now, where we have an area that can, you know, where that melts off at the end of a snowstorm, it goes into. A, uh, you know, a small subsurface. It doesn't just enter, you know, our waterways and it doesn't just enter into our general. Uh, drainage system. So.
Mr. Andronic, can you, can you talk to, can you speak with your engineer to see if they can add that to, as a part of the plan?
Yeah, we can certainly entertain that. And, uh, and Mr. Taylor. Um, I'm sure I can dig up your contact info. Somewhere, but it might be helpful for us to maybe hop on a, you know, at a later date, hop on a call and we can kind of talk through this together if that's all right with you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know it's, it seems like a minor consideration, but this times, you know. Uh, 20 parking lots or, you know, whatever we get over the, over the course of a year or two years, it, it adds up. And then. Obviously with the MS4 permitting, that's going on with the, with the state now, it's, it's, it's a concern on every level. So we, we, we try to get a. Spearheaded at the very beginning. So.
Certainly. Yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate up. I, I have all the confidence that we can, we can solve this.
All right. And if there is any other, if there is any other comments that Mr. Taylor has, you guys can, you guys can kind of hash that out.
Yeah, well, Dave, we can talk about the drainage issues on, um, on Colby and Wilson and et cetera. I want to make sure that I understand specifically the problems you're trying to solve. So. I'll reach out to you in, in the days to come and perhaps we can just set up a quick, quick coordination call.
Okay, that would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to add so much more to your already hectic schedule. Uh.
No, it's a part of it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, all right. Well, let me just go back to the. Do, 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 do. All right. Mr. Galvin is asking me via email, uh. Mr. Andronic, do you intend to respond to Cliff Balmer's comments, design review consultant?
Oh, we, we did. We, we, we responded, um. For, to every single comment that he provided. That was two submission packages ago.
Okay. I just, I didn't just, I'm going through, I'm going through it, just making it sound like there, there was additional. So, and I'm just making sure.
No, we only received that one comment package and we formulated our response so that it was literally on his letterhead and it was his comment. And then our response underneath. So, yeah.
You bolted after that. Okay. Got updates from Taylor. That's good. Um. Let's see. Judy is, I know she was going to be late. I don't know if she's here now because again, we started a little bit earlier than we expected. Um, let me just go, I'm going to say Judy, are you here? And Judy is not here. So what I'm going to do is see. If financial review comes in, okay. Um, we talked about the financial review. Uh, we had someone, we contracted with someone, uh, but unfortunately due to the, I guess, due to the holidays, we'll blame COVID like everybody else is doing. Uh, he kind of blew us off. So we have someone else. Judy found someone else to kind of take the. You know, take this, take the ball on this one. Um, let me get it from name of Brett Pelletier. Uh, he's looking at it at this point and we should add, supposedly we should have something within the next couple of weeks. Um, so that is that.
If I, if I could, I'm assuming, I just want to make sure I understand how this is going to go. I'm assuming that he will review the analysis that we put forth in our last package.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then provide us a list of comments and questions and materials that he needs to further his investigation. We're ready to do that. You know, we, we've been ready to do that. So, but I'm, am I understanding that process correctly?
That's, yeah, that's, that's basically what we're looking at. Um.
And you think couple of weeks?
This is what I'm being told, but again, this is not on my schedule. So I, and I don't know. Um, I, I've, I'm getting this for, through. Uh, bits and pieces through email from both Judy and Bob. Um, so again, Judy is supposed to be on. I know she's not coming until later. Um, but if she does, if she does happen to sign on, we can get a little bit of update from her on that. Um. All right. We've talked pretty much everybody from the town that we want to talk to. Uh, Mr. Ruble, I know you're here. Do you have any additional concerns?
Rob, Rob, I'm all set at this point.
All right. I appreciate it. Sorry. Just coming back to you for, for now. Uh, I want to just open it back up to my board members. Um, cause I'm assuming that everybody's going to have something to say. Uh, so I want to start with the board members themselves. Where are we? Bob Baker, where are you? Bob Baker, OG, jump on here. You're voting on this. So you got anything to say to, you got anything to add, to add to this or to add and, you know, to ask the applicant? Muted.
Uh. The response from the police department on the sidewalks on Pond Street.
Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Can you do me a favor? And I know you hate doing it, but can you read that? So the general public can hear this.
Uh, this is from Nick, the, uh, Rockland Police Department, January 7th, 2021. I reviewed the updated plans from Shingle, oh, housing development. As noted in the updated plan, the project has increased the parking spaces ratio from 1.93. With a total of 446. As stated in earlier conversations, it has been the concern of our department. That the complex have adequate parking availability so that is not to cause parking. Issues in and around the complex, including nearby neighborhoods. This increase in parking availability should help with that issue. Having read the response from the applicant regarding the. Installation of sidewalks on Pond Street, I understand. Their position, but I am not still of the opinion that you have. You will have pedestrian traffic exiting the complex onto Pond Street to travel to areas. Stores, uh, for casual walks. For that reason, it is recommended that the complex incorporate some walking trails. Proposed a sidewalk moving south on Pond Street that connects to the existing sidewalk. Uh, thank you, Lieutenant Nick DiZioli.
Mr. Baker, you know, I think you know this area, uh, probably better than I do. Is he tied, is he talking? Connecting it to a sidewalk that's down with Turner, Turner Road?
Yes, this Turner Road is a, like a horseshoe.
Yep.
And. There is sidewalk to the. South. Entrance of Turner Road. There's two of them.
All right. Um, what was your, what's your major, what's your concern at this point, sir?
Have they, have you, have they addressed anything on that?
Mr. Andronic.
So, I mean, so this comment just echoes several of other comments of the same nature in regards to. A sidewalk, which I believe where we left it, we were discussing the sidewalk along the driveway. However, it sounds like perhaps. The police department is alluding to the installation of a sidewalk along Pond Street, which we've addressed in the past is. Just being cost prohibitive. I mean, that's a, a major in, you know, town infrastructure project that there's no way could be absorbed. Um, by this project. Um, but I would, I would, I would say, um, that we have included walking trails. On his last sentence, we recommend that the complex incorporate some walking trails. Um, several iterations ago, we did. Um, we did incorporate a over a thousand foot long walking trail, which leads down to a nature observer, observatory. So we've addressed that concern, but I, I, I'll echo our response. Um, that we've given in the past to installing a sidewalk along Pond Street. Um, in that, that, that's just completely cost prohibitive. However. Our offer. To install a sidewalk along the driveway in the future, should a sidewalk be installed on Pond Street. Still stands and, and additionally, our offer to support the town and in their endeavor to pursue that project also still.
Understood, sir. I just, I'm pulling up Google Earth right now to. I just, I want to get some dimensions. I want to see if I can come up with some dimensions because it's looking to me like I, I'm, I'm going to have to agree with you. Um, so if you go from here. There. Three. And then from there. All the way down to Turner. Yeah. Yeah. You're looking at about 11. Almost 1,200 linear feet of sidewalk.
That, that would include. Yeah, it would, it would, we would, it would require road widening, we'd be working over culverts. It would be significant. That's a significant project.
No, then that is a significant project. That, to do that, that is, that is significant. Um. But. Only about 800 to go to the intersection with the, with Hingham Street. It's the other way to look at it. So it's the, and, and again, I'm, I'm roughing these numbers in, um, using. Strictly using Google Earth, but, um. They just, they, it, it seems to be it's, it's still a very major, it's a major concern that in the beginning. You kind of talked, we talked about, you know, this being a destination, but people would be able to, 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 you know, to walk to different places and then to. Turn around and say that, no, nobody's really going to be able to do that. It kind of flip flops and I, and you can understand the concern that I think most of the board members have. It's not the, the, the rest of the general public. It's just, you say, we say one thing and then we turn around and say, yeah, no, they're probably not going to. So it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a little confusing, but you can understand the concern that the town has at this point about. The pedestrian traffic. I thi, I think everybody can. Um. Mr. Baker, do you have anything else? Would you go, would you go? There you are. Mr. Baker.
Not, I wasn't for, uh, Pat to give his, or his comments that he sent out.
Okay. Um, I just, I texted Pat. He's not on the meeting. He's in another one right now. Uh, don't, let me just see. I think he may have texted back here. Uh, do. Uh, this is what I asked him if he had anything new to add to the meeting and he says nothing really new from my. Uh, from my end, uh, my January 4th letter has all my comments to date. Um. So that's really all he's saying. Uh, just to refresh everybody's memory, uh, Mr. Andronic, have we addressed all his comments?
This is Pat Brennan.
This is Pat Brennan's comments. Have you addressed the, I, I, again, just for, for, for Mr. Baker's.
Sure, sure. So, so we received, um, a memo from Mr. Brennan on January 4th, 2021. Most of which were, um, confirmation that we addressed comments from previous memos. Um, and had a list of his, you know, conditions of, you know, recommendations for conditions of approval. There were, there were a few items which required response. However, they were a direct reference to the comments that we received from CONCOM. We since received the rest of CONCOM's comments. They came in two batches. We received the final batch. On January 11th and we are formulating our responses to them, um, which is a, you know, a totally separate. Approval process and review process aside from the ZBA. So upon conclusion. Of that process and completion of our responses to the CONCOM questions, which, uh, Mr. Brennan referenced. We will respond to Mr. Brennan's, um, memo in, in kind as a part of that overall CONCOM response.
Okay. Uh, I can, I can, I can live with that because again, we have to take. We have to take the local jurisdiction under our, under, under the ZBA approval. The, the CONCOM, they take the state approvals. So. I know a lot of that runs kind of very close together. So, and I just want to make sure that. Both boards are satisfied with the, with the. With the turnout of the, you know, of the, of, of those comments that are at least your, your end of those comments. Uh, Mr. Baker, you still good?
And I, and I do believe we've answered all of, uh, Mr. Brennan's, I will call them locally, local questions. Um, the comments that are left open, he's, he literally references CONCOM's letter. So I just want to make it clear that there aren't questions that are just related. He specifically just said, make sure you answer CONCOM's question number three. It's like that level of. He's just pointing.
Okay. No, and, and that's why, that's why we have it because he's, you know, he's. He is the, he is our, our wetland rep at this point.
Yeah.
Um, back to Mr. Baker, are you good? Can I, can we go to the next? Do you have something else? And if you do, please speak up, sir.
Here's we. On number five. It's about the wet, uh, since the Rockland Wetland Protection Bylaw. Defined as the hundred foot buffer to the wetlands as a resource area. In the August 14th letter, we requested that the application. Engineer provide the total area of the st, disturbance. In the total proposed imperious areas within the 100 foot wetlands buffer. Um, noted as to. Note added to sheet C104 indicating that there will be approximately. 203,000 square feet of this disturbance within the 100 foot buffer. To the wetlands and 6,700 square feet of that would be imperious surface. Chapter 407 also regulates. A 25 foot no touch buffer wetland. Because the proposal indicate work within the 25 foot no touch. And in some areas right up to the wetlands, the application should also provide the board. With the total area of this disturbance. In the total proposed imperious area within the 100, the 25 foot buffer. We note the application has requested a waiver from the Rockland Wetlands Protection Bylaw. To allow the disturbance within the 25 foot buffer. In addition to providing the area of disturbance. We cast it above, we should guess the application provide the total area of uplands. Wetlands, 25 foot buffer and 100 foot buffer on the proposed project site. This would allow the board to understand. This would allow the board to understand. The total percentage of buffers in resource area disturbance on the parcel. The application submitted a wetlands buffer impact exhibit dated. December eighth, twenty twenty, which lists the square footage of the. Excuse me. List the square footage of the. Imperious area disturbed in the twenty-five foot and hundred foot buffer. The exhibit indicated that forty-two point three thirteen percent or twelve point eight acres of the site is uplands. Disturbance within twenty-five foot no touch buffer would be about one point six seven acres. Or thirteen percent. Of the uplands and distribution within the one hundred foot. Buffer would be about six point one eight acres. Or forty-eight percent. We also noted that according to the drainage calculation, about five point eight five acres or forty-five percent of the uplands. On the site will be covered by imperious surface. Which is about three point seven five acres. Would be within the one hundred foot buffer. I don't know if. That is way too much work to be done in the wetlands area. For a project. But it seems like almost. But. A quarter to half of it is, is all the work in the wetlands area. And what is. What is that?
I'm sorry, no, I don't mean to, I don't mean to interrupt you. Um, the problem is that this is a giant island, basically. Um. This is almost island growth, if you think about it. Uh, it's, it's, it's a giant island in the middle of the wetlands. There's a long road to get out to it. Um, and they basically are going right up to the twenty-five foot buffer and over that. Um, the town, our town has adopted a twenty-five foot no touch. Um. Again, I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not an environmentalist. Uh, I'm not on the CONCOM. Uh, but. It does seem. That they have the right. To be able to go right up to the twenty-five foot no buffer or no touch zone. Um. Again, if we go back to this, if we go back to this and. Mr. Andronico, I think you, you, you know this, you know this comment, you know, you've read this before, correct? All right, so. What, can somebody remind me what the, what the total number of? Basically disturbance within the twenty-five foot buffer was? Because obviously you're going into the twenty-five foot buffer a little bit, but I don't remember if there was a wetlands. That I don't remember if the resource area itself was getting touched.
I, I may have, I may have to defer um to my team on this one. Um, but I can tell you that this is one of the items that is directly related to our response to CONCOM where we're, we are producing basically an impact zone. Um. Study and representation. And with that, it has been requested that we provide a restoration plan and program as well. Um, for the work zone buffer, which there's a little bit tied. As for the total number of, of the total square footage or, or acreage or whatever. Uh, unit of measurement would be appropriate in terms of impact on the twenty-five foot. Um, no touch zone, I don't have that answer right now. Someone on my team may be able to dig that up through the, you know, during the course of this call. Um, if anyone has it on hand, I'll ask you to speak up now, but. I can't give you that number off the top of my head.
Dave, I can chime in, we responded to this in the last package, there's a table on sheet C one oh two. That spells out. The total square footage of the zero to twenty-five foot buffer. And what is impervious inside of that? So the total square footage is the seventy-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-three square feet and that impervious impact in the twenty-five foot buffer is the seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-three.
All right, is that only taking a kid, and that's all, that's all within the twenty-five foot buffer?
That's correct.
Okay. Remind me, are you trying to, are we, are we looking at modifying any of the actual resource? Any of the direct wetland line? Are we modifying any of that?
No.
All right, um. Yeah. I want to add, it's, it, and you said that this was a direct, this was, this was a direct comment that, that CONCOM has already seen as well?
It, it's related to a CONCOM um question as it relates to work zone buffers. So it's not a copy paste from CONCOM, but when we answer CONCOM, we will be able to answer this as well. We really probably already could answer this one by directing Mr. Brennan to the sheet, but we wanted to respond to this whole. We didn't want to respond to his letter piecemeal.
No, I understand.
Most sense to respond to it in long form.
Well, that's, that's absolutely understood. Uh, Mr. Baker, you got anything else you want to talk about?
No, the reason I brought it up is they're asking us to give them a waiver for, to work in that area.
No, I agree. Agreed.
I want to know exactly what's going to happen in that area. Is there going to be work done in there? You know. It'll be, it'll be good to give us numbers and stuff, but. I want to hear exactly what's going to be done in those areas.
Yeah, it's, I, I think the best way to give the answer is to kind of direct you to the site plan itself. Um, and it will show you, I, I guess in essence, what will be there.
All right, um, can I make a suggestion?
I, I don't mean to give an answer that, I don't mean to, I mean. You know, there were several areas and there are different conditions in each area and, and just probably the best way to. Understand what's going to be there is to look at the drawing, so I don't mean, it's not a, I'm, I'm not trying to kick the can or anything like that.
Dave, can I just jump in?
Yeah, Patrick, please.
So there's, I mentioned the site plan, we also provided an ex, a colored exhibit last time around that colors these impact areas. So you can see exactly where we are impacting at the twenty-five foot buffer. It's shown in red.
Yep, no, I remember that, I remember that plan, will that answer or will that satisfy the CONCOM end of it? I'm only assuming that they saw it too.
It, they've seen that, yes, it is, it is, it is a part of the CONCOM review. Um, so they're aware of it, but. It's more of how it relates to, you know, work zone buffer zones as well, that's really what they care about, so. Not, not that they don't care, but the answer is yes. That, that is a part of the response to CONCOM, but you should be able to look at it now and get the answer to your question as it relates to the local bylaws.
Hmm.
So I think, which is what I think Mr. Mr. Baker is asking.
No, I, that's, that's agreed, that's agreed. Mr. Baker, you, you remember that plan, right? I do, I, I do. Okay. I don't remember if it was a full-size plan or if it was an eleven by seventeen, like a scaled down eleven by seventeen. That might be part of the issue because it's a scaled down plan, I don't remember if it was a full size or not.
Those were, those were included in the, in the large set as well.
It's large size, I can share it right now, I have it up if you want me to share it.
If it would help, I think, I think it would help because I know a lot of people on here are still concerned about the environmental end of this. Um, if you can do that, that would be phenomenal.
So largely the impervious buffer impact in the twenty-five foot zone that we're talking about, it's a result of the driveway. Right here. There is some grading in the twenty-five foot buffer, but that'll be restored with uh vegetation along the perimeter in this light red.
Moment to you, all right. All right, so in the end. The major impact is the roadway coming in.
Correct.
Well, we can't block your access from getting into your, to, from getting into your site, saying there's. A, unfortunately, it's kind of a no-brainer. Um, it's going to happen. Uh, so, Mr. Baker, do you, does that kind of answer your question? That's really where the, that's really where the, where, where the major impact of the buffer is gonna.
That's what I wanted to know, and I think the general public wanted to know if. Was going to be more towards the Wilson side. Uh, the Home Depot side where the work was going to be done.
No, I agree, I absolutely agree, I thank you for bringing that back up. Um, okay, Mr. Baker, you've had enough time, I'm going to, I'm going to somebody else. Mr. Mr. Haynes, uh, you've been very silent tonight, so I want to come to you, sir.
Oh, thanks. Uh, I actually don't have any questions about new information, but I will on just two quick comments.
Please.
I think the issue um is, on the wetlands is that. If we go, I, I think the point he was trying to make was, there's going to be disturbance, not just between the zero and twenty-five, but beyond. Like you can't build to the zero and not disturb. Beyond the zero, so he's looking for um remediation, he wants to know what the plans are to restore what is disturbed. And, and so isn't just where it is, so I think that's something that we're expecting to see in the future. So it's not just, it's not just where it's being disturbed, but going beyond, it's like we're not just. You know, we've got to do something about what gets damaged in the process.
And Mr. Andronico, this is what the, this is what you're talking about.
And this is related directly to the CONCOM review, which what we are providing is. A work zone buffer and we're using the Army Corps of Engineers standard for that, for that area of work. And then as a part of it, we're presenting a restoration package which will literally say, this is what we're going to plant, this is how we're going to plant it. Um, to restore that disturbed um wetland area.
So, Mr. Haynes, thank you for bringing that connection together, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, well done, better than I did.
The, the other thing that I, I hadn't, I hadn't really understood. About the sidewalks and Turner Road. Um, so I think the town needs, I think we need to hear this more clearly. But I've been intrigued by this idea that. Apparently the town is actually saying, no one wants to go out to Hingham Street, no one's ever going to get out there, the state is never going to. Build the crosswalks that we need, so that idea. Uh, so in fact, they're trying, now the town is trying to say. We've, we've put the sidewalk on the wrong side of the access road. What they're saying is they want, there are all those sidewalks that are down towards, they kind of start around Turner Road. And those neighborhoods down to the tennis courts, all that direction. Um, there's some conservation land down there, so those neighborhoods have sidewalks, it's a walking neighborhood. It's even along Pawn Street, there's some sidewalks, so trying to make some connection between. This project and Turner Road. And I'm not sure if they just want the sidewalk on the, I'll call it the causeway, the. Sidewalk to be on the other side, to be on the Turner roadside, so that if the town ever develops sidewalks the rest of the way they could. Or maybe they're trying to say. Give access either down the paper roads or down Wilson Street or somehow there will be. A sidewalk connection, a walking connection between this project. And the sidewalks in the neighborhood and the other houses in the area. Frankly, I'm not quite sure what, what they're suggesting, but I'm intrigued and I think it's an interesting. Uh, it's a more, it's an interesting topic to pursue, like how, how are we connecting pedestrians? To this project and what does it actually mean? So the town has sort of shifted its position. Um, Dave, uh, Taylor might have a further comment about if he understood, he brought it up as well. Um, but I think that's the idea, we've got the sidewalk on the wrong side of the causeway, or we should be talking about a sidewalk somewhere, somehow else. On the, bringing pedestrians out of this uh project. So it's comment, they don't have an answer to it.
So, Mr. Haynes, I think I'm understanding this right, so if you're, if we're standing on our site and we're about to leave the site. At current, we're, we're proposing a future sidewalk on the left. You're saying that, it sounds like maybe the town is suggesting have that sidewalk on the right. So when you walk down, you're taking a right down Pawn Street rather than a left down Pawn Street.
I think that's what they're saying.
Okay.
Towards Turner Road.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have the map drawn correctly.
Baker is shaking his head, but that's how I'm reading this thing about going towards Turner Road.
Have Rob, if you would, do.
Yes, please, Mr. Taylor.
So, uh, I know I, I've referenced, there was a, there was a road safety audit that we had done in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen because we were. We originally, we did uh Pawn Street over in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So we were looking to link up, I know we had residents. Uh, inquiring if we could link up Pawn Street to the parking ride across the street from Hingham Street. So we did a joint road safety audit that was completed in twenty eighteen. By uh Howard Stein Hudson, which I believe the developer referenced as well at the beginning of the uh. Of when they started the development. Uh, so there was, you know, there was a lot of questions with that, you know, there was, uh, there were pedestrians using. The grass strips, you know, along the corridor of Pawn Street and crossing Hingham Street. And what we got out of that uh safety audit was that. Mass DOT was part of it, that they would not link up a crossing going across Hingham Street. So that obviously, you know, the town didn't want to have any liability of, of, of putting a sidewalk up that area. It, it, it could be done, but there is no what we call connectivity, like you would be going across Pawn Street heading towards. Uh, Burger King, you know, the ninety-nine, all that, but Mass DOT doesn't, there's no connectivity there, there's no walkway. And the same coming down Gardner Street, there's no connectivity, you know, there, you know, there's some underpasses where they have some hardscape. But again, no, no connectivity, so I think what Nick Zioli was referencing as far as that. Is where there was limited amount of parking and developer was pushing that this was, was going to be more of a pedestrian friendly. Uh, development. That we were making, we were looking to make it more pedestrian friendly at that point. You know, whether we, whether you do a walking trail through, you know, the back part of the facility and maybe out towards. Uh, Hingham Street out that way, maybe. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, about the site plan, or you, maybe you. You go towards Turner Road, which is what uh Mr. Zi, you know, Lieutenant Zioli referenced. And then, you know, the town would pick up the rest of that and go down towards Hanover just so we had. You know, a little bit more pedestrian friendly walkways, you know, keep in mind there's, once you get down to Hanover and it crosses over to Nelson. Nelson Drive, you know, it stops on the Hanover end too, so you're, you're very limited as far as uh pedestrian use and then also. You know, bicycle use was also brought up into the uh, the traffic study that was completed in twenty eighteen. And that traffic study is, is out there, you know, for reference as well, so I just hope that uh. That answers some of uh Mr. Haynes's questions as far as.
I, I think that, you know, I, I heard a contradiction in there, but we are saying south, going south on Pawn Street.
The south would be towards uh, you know, it's, it's, it's Turner Road and then I guess if you want to reference north as heading towards uh. Hingham Street, which, you know, obviously you'd be moving guardrails, you'd widen that, I'm not sure you would have the. The, the compliant five-foot side uh with walkway that you would really want. There, I know there was, they made reference to that in that, in that report that maybe it could be done. But Mass DOT, like I said at that point, you know, wasn't looking to. Go across Hingham Street, obviously they would have to add a, an island and push button crosswalk systems, ma- make it ADA acceptable, so. Uh, obviously there, there would be a lot of liability they would be taking on uh as far as that, so. So we, we kind of pulled it off the table at that point on the, on the town's end, so.
So it makes more sense that we've, we've been talking about having this pedestrian access and it's on the wrong side of the road. So the, our Lieutenant Zioli has said. That's, the way he wrote this was exiting. Um, you know, heading south on Pawn Street, um, connecting to that existing sidewalk. And, and so in my mind, that, you know. That, there's a number of ways to sort of head in the direction of the existing sidewalk, so I think it's worth, it's worth further discussion and more. You know, sort of more consideration in the future, how, um, whether that's coming through that lower parking lot and going along paper roads towards Turner Road. Or whether that's coming out and maybe just a future provision coming out of the causeway, but. With the future sidewalk on the other side of the street. So, but it, that's, that was a long, that was my comment and uh worth talking about at some other future time, it'd be great to hear from neighbors. Um, about that issue as well and connecting some of those trails. Um, the developer could address whether, you know, whether neighbors, you know, might want to walk on. You know, the trails they're proposing um on the property, so I, I think those kind of community connections. So I, I think those kind of community connections increase the value to the community, you know, for a project like this. So it's worth having further discussion.
And that's all I agree with you, Tim. Mr. Chairman.
Uh, let's see. So we got Mr. Haynes, uh, who's name is the big Mr. Haynes, Mr. Tansy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I echo the concerns of the, the infrastructure with respect to the utilities, water sewer. But also, as I had mentioned in the past, the scalability of this project. It is an extremely large project. There will be young kids that will get around with traveling on bicycles. And I do think that sidewalks are a very important element of the infrastructure that need to be considered. Taking into consideration the comments from the, from the police department and our own consultant. I think it's a very good idea, what was mentioned in Pat Brennan's January fourth letter with respect to having the, the access causeway being twenty four feet wide with a guardrail between that and the sidewalk going out to Pond Street. And having some connectability along Pond Street to Turner Road and the, and the subdivisions to the south. There will be children living in this complex. There will be children from other neighborhoods going to and from and, and, and so forth. And I think that's from a safety standpoint, I think it's very important that the developer be prepared to provide a sidewalk on the causeway road, access road going into the development and have some type of provision for accessibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. As, as you can see, parking is an issue. The, the latest letter from the, from the police is indicating that they've got concerns about traffic circulation. People parking on the, on the causeway access and, and, and so forth. And that, that's my concern, the scalability and the livability of this project. And we've got to make sure that adequate infrastructure is, is going to be provided to make this project safe and livable.
I appreciate that, Mr. Tansy. Let me throw, let me, let me throw this out. I know what the, I know what was being asked by the town and they want to connect. They want to connect sidewalks from the, from the entrance of the causeway. They want to, they want to connect the sidewalk somehow, some way. Going down to Turner Road is, it's, it's a rather long shot. It's a lo- it's a long distance. And like I said, it's longer go, it's longer to turn a road from the entrance than it is from the entrance to the intersection with two twenty eight.
Yes.
Let me throw this out there. It's six hundred feet if you go from the entrance to Wilson Street. A basic bike path, if you were to ride a bike. Let's just, let's just say you were going to start in, let's say the kids wanted to ride a bike. All right. More than likely, they'd probably go off road on the walking trail or something like that, whatever. But if they wanted to go out to Pond Street, they'd have a circuit that's approximately thirty two hundred feet long. If you connected from, if you connected from the entrance of Pond Street. If you connected that via a sidewalk, all the way to the entrance of, and all the way to the entrance of Wilson Street. So it's a hardscape walking path. But it gives you a walking path that connects, that connects the site to Pond Street, along Wilson Street. And gives you the ability to walk back into the site through that gated access. So if the town wants to, if the, if the, if, if the town, whether it's the highway department, whoever it is, is requesting that a sidewalk be built on, be built on Pond Street for future purposes in the event that we put a sidewalk out there. It's a shorter distance from the entrance to Wilson Street than it is from the entrance to Turner Road or from the entrance to, to Hingham Street. I'm just throwing that out there. I just, I got Mass GIS now and I'm, I'm snapping distances that way. So Mr. Andronicle, it's, it seems like it's really coming down to the town wants more pedestrian access. I can't say that they're ever going to be able to cross Hingham Street from Pond Street. I can't say that they're ever going to be able to cross Pond Street to go to Burger King. If they want to go to Home Depot, they're certainly not going to carry a handful of two by fours home with them. So I don't know, I don't know going to Home Depot is really a, a, a thing for anybody that's going to be living here. But everybody's talking about more pedestrian access. I just want you to think about that. Again, we're throwing that on, I'm, I'm throwing some dimensions out here just so you can see it. I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of stickler, a lot of sticklers on this. I just want you to understand that. Mr. Tansy, does that, does that help with things a little bit?
It, it does, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, maybe, you know, my, my feeling is that it's probably more important to have connectivity going south on Pond Street as what the, what was suggested with, by the highway superintendent. Because for a number of reasons, one of which is, as you stated, if you, if you go to Home Depot, you're not going to walk there. You're not going to be carrying home, you know, two by fours. You might walk down and get a hamburger, maybe, you know, at, you know, Wendy's or at, at the Burger King or whatever.
But.
Good point. I didn't even think about that. There is a Wendy's down there now.
Right. But, but still, I think it's from a safety standpoint. And from a utilization standpoint, I think, you know, children, you know, in the ages from say like a nine to, to sixteen or fourteen who are going to be using bikes and walking as a main mode of transportation. And most likely, they're going to be traveling to other, you know, residents of the, where their friends live. Rather than going, you know, down to Route two twenty eight on Hingham Street. I mean, there's not really that much to offer a, a, a child of that age or a youth of that age. What also could be done, I mean, here's, here's just a thought. Sidewalks, they do get expensive. Especially lengthy ones. But maybe rather than fully paving a sidewalk, you know, a, a long distance. Maybe preparing a, a gravel sidewalk bed the rest of the distance. So at least it could, could be utilized. At least some child could be walking or riding their bike, not directly on the pavement of Pond Street. And if a roadway improvement project comes that way in the future, it's just less money to, you know, to, to pave the sidewalk. You know, pave, pave over what, you know, a sidewalk gravel bed. I mean, they'd have to do some recompacting and fine grading of that bed when the time comes. But at least the rough clearing is done, the area is there. And in the interim, there's something that's a little bit safer and a little bit more accessible for, you know, young kids, you know, in the fourteen, you know, in the twelve to fourteen age bracket. And at least the, there's some livability in this, a safety element there. And I do want to see a paved sidewalk on that causeway. I do want to see a guardrail. I want to see a twenty five foot wide access road to this development. These are all basic safety features. And if a development that's of this scale and this magnitude, if that's not economic, if it renders this project uneconomic, I don't see.
Funding. Made that claim. We have safety concerns that contradict your safety concerns. We have to think of this property from an operation standpoint. But let's not die on that hill right now. What I will say, I have I have, I have no idea what you're asking.
I don't appreciate being interrupted. I mean, I wasn't done speaking, Mr. Andronicle. And I was not making any statement. I'm just saying that a project of this size can't afford to put a sidewalk on on its causeway. It is a basic safety feature. And a project of this magnitude will draw some children. There's going to be some children living in these units. They're going to have friends in the surrounding neighborhood. And I don't think it's too much to ask to give some consideration to, to our general public and children and make it safe.
Mr. Tansy, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yes.
Mr. Cremmons, do you happen to have a, a cross section that you can, you don't have to put it on the screen or anything. Do you have a cross section of the, of the causeway?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just, again, can we talk about the widths that we're talking about with the, with the sidewalk? Basically, the width of the wall, then the width of the curb, like I'm assuming there's a grass strip in there. I just, I don't have those plans up here. And I've missed it, Mr. Tansy raises a good question. I just want to confirm what the dimensions are going all the way across. That way we know that there's enough, there's enough room to make all this happen. I know we did this. I know you did that. But I just want to just reiterate it just so, again, board members know, Mr. Tansy knows and the general public knows.
Uh, well, I, I guess I, I'd rather almost not go back to the last submission package with that cross section. Because we've been in the process of revising the sidewalk to address your comments, which were to put the guardrail along the curving. Set the five foot, five block along the back. You'll have a twenty four foot drive aisle. It'll be included in the detailed package. We're, we're in the process of, of designing that and as, as part of the package that goes to you folks, but also in part as, as we're addressing the Conservation Commission comments as well with respect to the, the prior discussion we had on temporary impacts in the wetlands for, and the restoration.
Absolutely understood, Mr. Cremmons. But the overall dimension from face of the wall, from face of wall to face of wall, isn't going to change, is it? It's just the position of the sidewalk versus the, the position of the sidewalk. So overall, face of wall to face of wall, what's the dimension?
There you go. There with me. I just got to go to my side.
Mr. Chairman, you, to be more specific, you're talking about inside face of wall to inside face of wall. Is that correct?
Outside face of wall to outside face of wall. I want to know what the overall width of this is all going to be. Not taking into consideration the batter of these walls. Because you know, if they're, if they're versalock or if they're big block walls, there's going to be a batter from bottom, from, from bottom to top. So the estimated from top, outside face of wall to outside face of wall. Overall, let's call it the overall disturbed area. Because again, we know that there's going to be a bit, we know that the batter, there's going to be a batter out on the bottom. So the bottom is going to be wider than the top slightly, not much. But they're going to have to excavate a little bit further for the base of the wall, blah, blah. We know that. But the traveled way at the top of the wall, that's what I want to know. I want to know how much room is between the top of the wall from left to right. I want to know what the pavement is. I want to know what the, I want to see the curb. Again, that's why a cross section, simple cross section that we had the last time. It'll have all those answers on it. It's just a matter of where the sidewalk is and where the guardrail is. Those dimensions aren't going to change.
That's correct. So I mean, if we're looking at the last package, if you are looking at outside face of wall to outside face of wall. I will go to sections or station three hundred, which is kind of the pinch pointer on the corner. You're looking at, that's a nineteen plus twenty four, it's about forty three. Well, no, sorry, forty two feet.
All right, forty two feet. What's the width of the wall? Are we calling it a foot? Not eighteen inches?
It, it's bigger than that. Yeah, it's probably, it's close to the two feet.
All right. So we'll go ahead and we'll call it two and two. Regardless of which side the walk is on, all right, it's going to be, the next thing is going, the, the next thing is going to be the walk from the, there's the next thing is going to be the, the width of the walk on one side. We're calling it a five foot walk, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Then we're calling it a half foot for the curb. What's the width of the pavement? Twenty four, you said, correct?
Yep.
Then another half foot for the curb. Yeah, twenty five. And then there is, you got a grass strip?
Not at the narrowest points, but it's separated by guardrail. The guardrail is along, the guardrail is along the backside of the curb now. That was the discussion that we need, we had at the last meeting.
Exactly. But we're going to move that to the other side because we want the guardrail between, we want the guardrail between, actually, no, we want to in its highest points, you're going to need a guardrail on the backside, on the, on the inside face of wall too, correct?
We would have a fence.
There's a fence. The guardrail is.
There is a.
Different structure.
There's a fence for fall protection and then there's a guardrail along the edge of curb, on the backside of the curb to address your concerns about the vehicle safety.
Okay. All right. I just, again, I just want to make sure that we've got enough in there. And, and again, it's still been, it's still been, been determined that there is enough width within there to get a five foot sidewalk and enough, and enough pavement capacity to handle two lanes of traffic.
Yes, we, we've reconfigured it based on the feedback we got last month.
Okay. So I just, again, these are concerns that a lot of people are having. I already know this. Some of the members already know this, but the, the general public doesn't necessarily know this. I hate to keep going over, to keep beating dead horses. But we got a lot of people on here that don't necessarily know the same kind of things that engineers, land surveyors, mechanical engineers, highway superintendents, that they don't necessarily know what we know. So, um, so comfortably, Mr. Tansy. Twenty four feet of pavement? Good?
Yeah, I'm good with twenty four. Yeah. And a five foot sidewalk. And the sidewalk could be on the, on the south side of the causeway to facilitate linking with other areas of the, of the town.
And a, and a guardrail between, and a guardrail between the paving, curb, guardrail and then walk.
Right.
Okay. All right. So you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Mr. Andronicle, you're in your.
I want to just make sure I have it right because we've spent a lot of time on this and there were a lot of streets and routes and options coming up.
Oh, I know.
The ask is, the sidewalk that we just discussed, along the causeway on now the opposite side that we have shown a future sidewalk in the past. That's, that is the ask.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to say. That's what I'm going to say at this point. So if you are exiting the complex, it's on your right hand side. Right hand side going all the way down the causeway. And then the additional ask is to maybe prepare a gravel strip, a gravel walkway, if you will, from the entrance down to, let's say, Wilson Street. If the room is there within the right of way. We're not taking property. We're not doing anything like that. That's not going to happen. But if the room is there within the right of way, if we can, if you can prepare a gravel walkway, preferably with a guardrail between the walkway and the, and the paving on Pond Street. If it connects down to Wilson Street, again, you'll have a circuit of about three, between three and thirty two hundred feet of relatively hardscape, you know, on, you know, on road, off road terrain. for biking, for walking. Again, I know you got the walking paths out there. These are just, again, concerns that we're, we're looking at.
Oh, so if, if we, if we conduct this study and we're able to determine that we can accommodate the sidewalk on the opposite side and this gravel walkway out that leads to Wilson Street, would those two satisfy the pedestrian access and leisure walking concerns that the town has? In which case, I could eliminate my walking path, which we incorporated to address those very concerns, to offset the cost, which I would have to incur to install this Wilson Street walkway, which sounds like it's actually more valuable to the town.
Can't answer that because the whole point of a 40B like this is that you're supposed to have onsite, you're supposed to have onsite amenities, but you're also, you're also supposed to provide, uh, technically some sort of community access, which it's really impossible. And it's not necessarily the site to be able to utilize any community access. Because honestly, Home Depot, they're not going there. If they, if they're going into the Home Depot parking lot, they're gonna, they're gonna walk to Wendy's and get a cheeseburger. Or there is a Dunkin' Donuts within Home Depot, saying, walking there is not really even a thing now because they're just going to order Grubhub. And it's, everybody's delivering things nowadays. So, you know, the, the, the walking, the walkability at this point, the pedestrian access, it's more for, it's more for future connectability, I think, going forward down Pond Street. Building a sidewalk is expensive. I know this. But looking at the future and providing some sort of gravel access, gravel, gravel access walkway, it's a half, it's a halfway point between working with some sort of pedestrian, pedestrian access to get them off-site. That's the big thing, I think, is, is pedestrian access to get them off-site. Because I don't think everybody's going to want to just sit in their apartment the whole time. And they're not going to want to just sit on-site the whole time. I'm assuming they're going to want to leave to some degree. And maybe they're going to want to go biking down Pond Street, which people already do. People are, and people already do. They're riding inside the fog line and, and, you know, people are already biking down. You're not going to stop people from doing it, but giving them the access to be able to get off of the site comfortably and do some sort of circular navigation. It's not a bad, it's not a bad ask at this point. I don't think it's a bad ask. I don't know if it's too much or not, but I don't think it's bad.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yeah, that's my point.
May I interject for, for a second, if you would? My name's Jeff Angler. Uh, I'm a 40B consultant. I'm also a developer. I've been involved in 140, 140, 40Bs. I've permitted over 5,000 units. Uh, and I've obviously come into this process late. My client involved me because he's trying to get to the end of this process, as I'm sure the board is. And it's a complicated project with lots of different components and lots of different considerations. But regulatorily, as Mr. Chairman, and I'm sure the board knows, you have 180 days to, from the first public hearing to open and close the public hearing. It's my understanding you're beyond that because my client wants to work in good faith with the board. But we're getting to the point where the board needs to identify specifically what its ask is across the board, not just with pedestrians, not just with infrastructure, everything. And then my client needs to react to that. And I think the board, I don't know how much your town council or Judy has advised you, but I think the board needs to understand, you know, the context of this negotiation and discussion. Because I've never seen a 40B that the board and all the neighbors are thrilled with and like every, every aspect. And that's not going to happen here. But if the board recommends and requires all of these different sidewalks and infrastructure and mitigation, my client is not going to have any alternative but to appeal to the HAC, which is bad for both parties. But don't take my word for it. I would ask your council, how municipalities fare at the HAC? They fare very, very poorly. And the way that process works is it goes back to the original submittal. So all the mitigation, all the things that my client has been willing to offer the board as a way to try to come to a somewhat compromised solution goes away. So there will be no sidewalks. There will be no, um, other, some of the other things that they've offered because that's just how the process works. Don't shoot the messenger, but that's how 40B works. I know it's controversial, but that's how it works. So I think as the board, it's your obligation and responsibility to try to get the best project. I have no, no, you know, I, I, that's the objective. But you need to understand that time and continual asks will obligate my client to, to say, all right, I've had enough. I'm going to go to and take legal recourse and, and, and we both lose. But the town will end up spending a lot of money that I would imagine the town doesn't want to spend fighting a case that it can't win. So what I'm saying is, with my client, and first, and the other thing is, I've been involved in so many projects. This is the most overparked suburban 40B I've ever seen. Your parking ratio for multifamily rental housing, and I've worked all over Eastern Mass. I've never seen a 40B have this kind of parking ratio. The days of two spaces per unit, when you have all these one bedrooms and two bedrooms, that's zoning from 30 years ago. I mean, I've, I have two projects in Winchester right now. The ratio is one and a half. I have a project in Manchester by the sea, 1.65. We just did several proj, uh, uh, project in Situate. I think that's less than one and a half. Those are all rental projects, two projects.
But could they walk? I mean, could they walk to amenities?
Uh, excuse me, excuse me.
So, Mr. Chair.
Who is that?
I'll, I'll conclude. I know you guys are in a tough position and I respect that. All we're trying to do is figure out what the town's ask is so we can respond to that. And I think there's been enough dialogue over the last six months. My client has said he'll talk the water, he'll talk the sewer. Technically, the zoning board, as you know, under 40B, is supposed to act in place of all local boards. Those are local boards, but my client is willing to try to go to, if it were me, I would say, hey, zoning board, you guys write a letter and ask those boards if they have capacity or what their asks are. But my client, Mr. Andronico and his team, are willing to do that and work through those issues and come back at the next hearing. 1.7 in mitigation is, is significant and that will be a huge benefit to the town going forward with its infrastructure. But once again, were my client to appeal and talk, that 1.7 goes away, which is a shame for everybody. So I, what I'm here to do is try to say, understand the context, but we really need to get to, we can't have the discussion of, well, we're going to talk about it more, or let's have more meetings, or let's go. We need to start funneling this down to know what the asks are. So that your, your, your council can write up a draft decision and we can say, yeah, we can live with that. Or these two or three conditions we just can't live with. And you might say, you know what, we're willing to fight about it and take our chances. And you have every right to do that. I'm just saying, if you look at the case law at the HAC, the purpose of 40B is to get mixed income housing and the, built in east, in Massachusetts, and the standards changed. The wetland standards, we have to adhere to DEP regulations, not local rockland, you know, considerations and wetland bylaw. Don't hate me for saying that. That's just the law. So the standard changes and the burden of proof changes. And it shifts in favor of the, the applicant or the developer, providing they can prove it's uneconomic. And I will say, having been through the process many, many times, it's a very low bar to prove something's uneconomic, particularly with the cost of construction these days and other things. So I'll shut up now. If anybody has any questions about the regulations of the process. But I'm just trying to get us, I, I, I'm sure the board is sick of my client. Let's try to get through another hearing or two, get everything on the table. We, we can help based on what we hear from water and sewer, actually help craft the conditions that will go in the permit. And, and then we'll see where we're at relative to reaching some compromise solution. And maybe we do, maybe we don't. I think it benefits everybody that we do, but maybe it doesn't work out that way. So I appreciate you indulging my, uh, long-windedness. I just thought it was important that, and because I don't have the history here with the board, that people understand, you know, how 40B works and what's at stake. Because a lot of times the neighbors are going to say, hey, zoning board, stick it to the developer. Don't give them anything they want. And, you know, we're going to show them. And that ends up worse. You know, that ends up worse. So let's try to find some sort of compromise here. My develop, my, my client, I think, has already demonstrated a willingness in some of these areas. The board, I think, already knows it's not going to get everything it wants. But hopefully we can, over the next hearing or two, you know, coalesce and synthesize all this and come to something that we can, uh, we can, um, and I appreciate the comments um, from the, the neighbors that I'm reading on the chat as I speak. Those are amusing. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Angler. I do, I do appreciate that. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to say that, um, some of the comments that you made, I, I take them as threatening. Uh, we all know, we all know that your client can take this to the state and can appeal this. We know that. All right? Maybe some of the general public doesn't know that, but quite honestly, they, they came across as a threat. I don't appreciate that. That's number one. Number two, we've been trying to do this, exactly what you said. The problem is, is that this is a very complicated matter, this site specifically. All right? There's a lot of, there's a lot of 21E issues on this site that you may not know of. All right? There's a lot of environmental concern issues on this site that a lot of people, that if I unleash them right now, they're going to come after you guys. They're going to talk about all the issues that are on this site. This is an extremely, extremely complicated site to be able to permit this number of units in five-story buildings that everybody is going to see. This is an excruciatingly difficult site to deal with. All right? I appreciate the fact that you have a lot of experience doing this, that you're a developer, that you've been through this process many times. But you have to remember that this zoning board, while only two of us have actually been on a series of 40Bs, you've got an architect, an engineer, a land surveyor, a mechanical engineer, and you've got construction specialists. We know what it takes to deal with sites like this. And I'm going to tell you right now, I did not, I did, I did not appreciate what I consider a threat. So first and foremost, we are doing our job. We have, and we have enlisted, uh, we have enlisted professionals to be able to help us do our job. And I see her right there. Hey, Judy, how you doing? So.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Angler, I am not done. Mr. Angler, I am not done. I don't appreciate the threats. I appreciate why you were hired, but here's the deal. We have our professionals in place. We are doing everything that we need to be able to make sure that this is going to be, if we approve it, good for this town. And second of all, as far as I know, and Tony, I'm going to come to you on this, that 180 days, wasn't that changed because of the whole COVID thing? I know he's there.
Hey, I'm here. Sorry, I was on mute.
No, I dig it. What's the, uh, Mr. Angler has raised an issue when it comes to the 180 days.
Yeah, I believe that was, um, for last year. Um, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but sometime last year, the delay period ended when, uh, the state considered to be the emergency, less of an emergency, even though it became, it seems like a bigger emergency than it was last spring. But I believe those dates ended, uh, in August or September last year.
December.
December, okay.
Okay. So Tony, between you and Judy, what do we got for, what, what, what's our, what's our deadline at this point?
I need to calculate it, Rob. I need to calculate it. Bob, Bob may have already done that. Bob, Bob may have already done that. I think he's going to be joining us, but um, I actually have not sat down to do that. And so I don't want to give you misinformation.
No, and I understand that. That's why we have you here. Tony, can you do me a favor? Can you reach out to Bob and see if he, and see if he's calculated that? I want to make sure that, because that is also a concern of mine, making sure that we're, that we're under this 180 days. Because the other thing is, just get back to this, uh, do, 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 do. Uh, ask for a written extension. Bob is at, I don't know why. And again, this is why we're, I think this is why we're dealing with this, um, or why I'm making a stick, a, a, a big stink about this. He's asked, he's asking me to ask for written extension of public hearing until mid-March 2020. I have no idea why that is. I'm only assuming that we're dealing with the, that we're looking at the, the, basically, we're looking at that 180 days. So that's why, that's why he put it in here.
2021, Mr. Chairman, you said 2020.
Uh, March 2, yeah, 2020, 2021, my bad.
Uh, I think that part of the issue, Rob, is that we've been trying in earnest to get a proposal for a pro forma pay review. It has been very difficult. Um, I think that we have someone at this point to do that work. But at this writing, I don't, or this moment, I don't have his proposal yet, but I, it's coming.
Uh, last name Pelletier? Was it Brett Pelletier?
It's Brett Pelletier.
Okay. All right. He's, uh, Bob Roman wrote, wrote some basic messages here. So I had that. We talked about that before. So when I know we're looking at that. Let's see. All right.
But.
Come on now.
Can I apologize? I, I did not, I, I understand your comment. I did not intend it as a threat. I think you're not the first zoning board member that said that. Um, I, I mean it as just, and, and forgive me if, if the board is well-versed, and as I'm sure Judy has told you on how this process is, I did not mean it as a threat. It's more just a statement of fact on how the process plays out when a developer and a municipality can't come to a compromised solution. I did not, I, I know for a fact, we do not want to go to the HAC, trust me.
And we don't want you to. And we know what's going.
We're on the same team there. We're on the same team.
It doesn't serve us either.
We're not threatening. I, I, and I, and I, and so I just wanted to say that if that's how it came across, I can understand. I apologize. I was just trying to say, you know, what the next step in the process theoretically could be, not what it will be. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
No, that's the, that's, that's fine. That's fine. I understand. Thank you for the apology. That's cool.
And in Mr., and in Mr. Angler's defense, you know, the reason I commissioned him is to help us understand and navigate this process as well. So I think that.
You're doing, you've, you've got your pros, we've got our pros. I understand that. I appreciate that. Everybody needs these.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Uh, where are we? Where are we? Where are we? Uh, Mr. Baker, I just want to make sure that we got all the board members done. Yes, Mr. Baker, you're a, you're, you're a non-vote, you're a board member, but you're non-voting, but your, your opinion counts, please.
No, I, I just wanted to address your comment about Mr. Angler's statements, and I took it very, like, I took it very plainly to be a threat. So you're not alone.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Galley, turn your mic on, start talking. I know you, uh, I know you have a lot to talk about tonight.
Well, I don't really have much new to talk about. You already, everyone already asked the questions that you're waiting to answer about the water capacity. I walked in with that question and I know that's an open question. I'm definitely in favor of the sidewalks. I, until I read the letter from the police department, I didn't understand the benefit of going south towards Turner Road, at least in that direction. But I do believe, I, I thought about it. One thing I want to say, I first thought of this as like an old man. I wanted to walk to Home Depot. I lived there. Now I think of it as a kid. Why don't I go walk in so they can go trick-or-treating? You know, if anything, you know, like they can get access to the neighborhood, just, you know, or, um, so that's, you know, it's an open question. I do support a sidewalk, even if it's a small stretch, like you were saying, to Wilson or whatever. I don't know that. I don't know the layout of that as well. I drive down it. I don't have to travel to go down there. I go through it. So, um, I think it's all a benefit to the town to ask new development to help just put a little bit of sidewalk in when they're putting in places that don't have sidewalk. I think it's great. And those are the things, I think I was, yeah, those are the things I had. Um, and those are the things, I think I was, yeah, those are the things I had notes about as far as what I had thoughts about or anything. And I do want to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with your interpretation of Mr. Angler's, um, first comments. Um, it did feel like a threat and, um, but I do, but I do like the response that we're going to check out what the deadline is. But, uh, yeah, it, it did come across as an aggressive posture. And sometimes unfortunately, Mr. Andronico, I think sometimes it come across as defensive. And I know sometimes it's, you know, it's a, it's a stressful, stressful process, but, um, I, I.
Thing is a stressful process.
Right. So I think, I, I always forgive that because I know it's a heated, it's a heated moment. You know, you're trying to get something done. But, um, I want to thank.
I certainly don't mean to come across that way, but I appreciate your understanding. When I on occasion do, we've just, we've put lots and lots of works and lots of late nights outside of these hearings. So, you know, and.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I've, I've got, I've got young kids and a family and I sacrifice all the time, so it is just, it, this means a lot to us and to me personally, so it's, it is stressful. It is meaningful.
And I do.
It's big.
With one of the points that Mr. Angler was making about, about the asks, because I was confused about the whole, let's have a sidewalk go to Hingham Street, let's have a sidewalk go towards Turner Road. And like I said, I, I know it was a new idea to me. So I, I understand the frustration with having new sides being the sidewalk and new directions being the sidewalk. So I do actually agree that it seems like you're being asked to change things and a new thing to add. But, um, I, I, I'd like to see, I'd like it to see somewhere, you know, be productive and get something of a sidewalk. Because I do believe that'll be a benefit to the residents and the neighbors. And that's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gally. I appreciate that. Um, now, what I need to do is I need to open this up to the general public. I want the opinions from general public, but here's the thing. Everybody seems to keep talking about the same things over and over and over again. We know the concerns with traffic. We know the concerns with, do we have capacity? Do we not have capacity? When it comes to sewer or water. Um, I need to hear something new. I know that nobody on here, when it comes to general public, wants this. We all understand this. If we're going to speak about this, we have to, I, I need something new. I need something new that we really haven't touched on. Um, can anybody from the general public talk to me about something that we have not touched on yet? I've got a hand raised. I've got a Miss Sherri Valley. You're on mute, ma'am. You're on mute.
This is Sherri Valley and I live on Pond Street. Um, while I do.
We need the, you need name and address for the record, ma'am.
Four-one-one Pond Street, Sherri Valley. While I do object to the size of the development, I understand that that is what is planned. My main concern is the water supply and the potentials for contamination during construction. And I'm not clear on what is being done to monitor that. And I would like to make the suggestion, um, if the shingle mill developers would be willing to put funds in escrow to allow for any potential problems.
Ms. Valley, I appreciate your comments. Mr. Andronico, I don't want to, I don't want to address these immediately. What I'd like you to do is I'd like you to just take some notes. We're going to continue this.
To do that too. That way we can respond in some kind of meaningful manner.
I'd, I'd like to, if, if you're agreeable to that, then I'd like to do.
I'm happy to do it that way. I'll go ahead.
I appreciate it, Dave. Thank you. Ms. Valley, thank you again for your comments. Um, and keep going here. All right. Who's got something, somebody else? Who's got something to say? We see a Mr. Patrick Ronan.
How you doing, Rob?
Not too bad. We've heard from you several times, sir.
Yes, you have. Yes, you have. Yes, I agree with you, Rob. Um, Mr. Angler, I perceive that as a threat. There isn't anyone here now that doesn't perceive you as a threat. You know, if you have to go to the HAC, my question to you is how many developments did you ever have put on top of a town's water supply? How many?
I don't think. I, I appreciate the question, but Mr. Angler, you don't have to answer that. Because I, I, I know you're not, I, that, there aren't too many developments that I know of locally that are, that have been this close to a water supply like that.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a concern not just for us over here. Now, the entire town is watching this, Rob. The entire town, as well as the town of Abington and the surrounding towns of Norwell and Hanover. So this is a regional, regional concern. And, um, and, and again, um, Mr. Angler has threatened HAC. I don't think we would fear too badly there, but again, that's just my opinion. But I do think that the, um, the environmental threat outweighs any of the other concerns I brought to you, Rob. I mean, the, this is our water. It's a precious resource. We need to protect it for our children and their children. Mr. Andronico, you're not drinking the water. We are. So please, please, uh, Rob, this is, this is on the, on the ZBA. Do not let this guy bully us, please. I'm done. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Mr. Ronan. Thank you very much. Mr. Andronico, it just goes to, again, just environmental concerns at this point. All right, so we're going to, we're going to just heighten, you know, just heighten the amount of environmental concerns. Who's next?
Hey, Rob, this is John Wajner. I don't know how to raise my hand here. Can I speak?
Okay, I see it. I see you talking. John, I need your name and address for the, for the record.
It's John Wajner, one thirty-nine Turner Road.
And I was wondering if David could speak to, uh, the, uh, the attempt to pump private water out of, out of some wells that have been dug behind Turner Road. That came up, I guess, with the, uh, Water Department. And frankly, I read in the ledger, but I don't think we've ever talked about it here.
That is something that we have not talked about, and that is something that I was going to bring up. I've heard about the potential of onsite wells, um, within the property. Dave, I'm not going to ask you to really go into detail on this one yet, because I want you to, I, I want you to have time to, to address this. But the question is, has that been discussed? Has that been talked about? Private wells on site?
So I can give you, there truly actually isn't a lot of detail to talk about, but we've done, we've, we've, we've drilled a few test wells. Um, and we did that as a part of our due diligence, and in fact, I think two of them were, were, were drilled, um, long before I think we even put together this presentation, certainly my involvement. Right now, we're working diligently with the Water Department. We think that connecting to town water is more beneficial to the project. We've done some test wells. We've not, we've not done drawdown tests on the last one, so they're a exploratory at best at this moment in time, but right now we are pursuing town water.
All right, that's, that's kind of where I was thinking. Um, uh, Mr. John, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Um, we're all, who else do we got on here? Who else do we got on here? Rob?
Rob?
No, not, not too late. I saw Mary Parsons. Hey, Mary, how you doing? Put your, get your, get your mic, get your microphone on so I can hear you.
Mary Parsons, seven fifty-four Union Street. Um, I'm going to.
Talk to me.
The certified vernal pools and the information that was in the January fourth letter from, um, Beta Group. And they're saying that the closest work will be only three feet from the CVP boundary. I'm going to tell you, no, it's a hundred, hundred feet from that boundary that you get to work. They don't get to work within three feet of a certified vernal pool. Period. And I know this because I was a selectman. I was on the, um, Citizen Advisory Committee for the state, um, Mass Environmental Protection Report for the South Waymouth Naval Air Station. I was the Executive Director of A-R-A, Abington, Rockland, uh, Waymouth and Hingham people, um, on this subject and had a hundred thousand dollar EPA grant for contamination and another EPA grant for water and sewer issues in Abington and Rockland, Waymouth and, and Abington. And I'm saying on this, no, you won't be working within three hundred, three feet of a certified v- vernal pool boundary. Plus, um, I need to know the same thing that the, um, experts know. Will the vernal pool contain the same volume of water on, as before the work was done, as after the work was done? Because see, vernal pools, the species that use this vernal pool is an obligate species. If, if, if the conditions are not the same before any work is done, they won't use this pool. And that's a no-no with natural heritage. The other issue I have is, um, in terms of Mr. Angler, I took that as a threat and I also took it as bribery because of the fact that they have not been forthcoming with the environmental information that we need for this project. A hundred and eighty days, or no, I already sent you my issues, um, in terms of the environmental part of this, but the biggest environmental part of this is this is a Zone A. It's a, um, public water supply. And that's issued. I don't think for one moment that, uh, Mass DEP or EPA are going to allow them to drop any drinking water wells in our public water supply watershed Zone A. That would be a no-no because they're going to draw from, um, the water that we get in our surface water supply. And the issue, there's big issues with that sewer department. That's why they don't have an answer is because it's, it's old. It, uh, it may be breaking down. I've asked EPA to take a look at the NFT's permit. I'm waiting for information from that. And I also know that in terms of our water, the same issue. We really don't have that supply. And these are relevant issues. So if he wants to threaten to go to HAC or, or Housing and Development, go for it. Because I would be happy to tell them all about, um, our water supply, our sewer supply and the fact that he wants to locate on our public water supply Zone A, outstanding resource water. And I have a lot more, but I don't want to take up time from everyone else, but, um, no, they're not going to work within three feet of any vernal pool.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mary. Mr. Andronico, again, I'm not going to ask you to, to, to address any of this at this point. But I do have a question.
Sure.
It's been, again, and I have not seen this, maybe I'm missing something. The twenty-one E report, it's been, I know it was requested. People have talked about it. I've heard that it exists. Has that been, has that been supplied to, to the town at this point? Because I don't, I don't remember seeing this.
Matt or perhaps Patrick, do you guys have any info on that particular item? It may have been.
It's been requested before. I know that, and it's been talked about. But the question is, has it been, uh, Mr. Ruble, yes?
Yes, uh, last meeting I requested it and you were supposed to get the report. Get back to me on it. I also wanted to know the sites and where the core areas were taken and when the test was done. I have not seen any paperwork on any twenty-one E yet.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble. I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Andronico, can you just add that to the list?
Follow up.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate that. Again, uh, Mary Parsons, thank you very much, ma'am. Uh, who else do we got here?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman. David, did you want me to address the status of those or no?
Uh, yeah, if you could, that would be helpful, yeah.
Sure. So we've produced a phase one site assessment, which I, I believe is what you're referring to when you say the twenty-one E, but we've also done, um, multiple subsurface investigations out there. Those reports are done and produced. I'm not sure on the deliverable status to the town or the board.
Okay, Mr. Ruble, can I get, can I get you back on here for a second? He went out to smoke a cigar. Mr. Ruble.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Um, did you hear what Mr. Abraham, um, uh, responded, responded back to you with?
Yes, and, uh, am I going to get the location, the locations of these tests?
I, I thought that we had included this. I will double confirm, and regardless of whether it was sent before, we will make sure that this gets distributed.
And Mr. Ruble, if it, if there is something excruciatingly specific that you're looking for, because again, I've never seen a twenty-one E report, don't know what it looks like, don't know what it encompass, what it encompasses. I know you do. If there's something specific that you need, that I'm not, that, that I can't ask for, because I don't know what it is, I need you to ask for it a hundred percent right now.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to know the location of the core areas that were taken. Um, I do know when Mr. Smith had the ju- the junkyard down there, I do know where he was changing oil. I know how he was changing the oil down there. And I want to know where these core areas are at the site. That's all.
Yep. So the, the twenty-one E reports that we've prepared, sorry, is it okay to speak now or?
Oh, please do. If you, if you can, if you, if you can keep it, if you can keep it brief.
Um, yeah.
So it is a concern.
To address Mr. Rule's concern, the, the twenty-one E reports that we've produced, the first was called the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, which is more of a sort of history of the project where we identified the past uses, including the junkyard. The subsurface investigations that we did included test pitting across the property and soil borings, as well as soil sampling and groundwater sampling. So we have those reports. They are done. They are prepared. Um, in, you know, to David's point, we can figure out if they have been submitted yet or not.
I'll be looking forward to seeing them. Thank you.
Mr. Rosa, it's Attorney Galvin.
Uh, Mr. Galvin, how you doing, sir?
Very well. Uh, Mr. Abraham, were those, those, uh, subsurface investigations, those done as a voluntary assessment? Or were they part of a phase two?
I, you could say both. I mean, so we identified issues of concern after we completed the phase one. So we targeted specific areas of development, but also areas that were identified as, you know, operated under the former junkyard. And, you know, we had a pretty good idea of where those areas were based on a series of historical aerials that we could look at that showed, you know, areas of disturbed land that were used at one point for the junkyard.
So that was essentially a phase two of, subsurface evaluation?
That is correct.
And are you able to tell us in some substance what the results of that phase two was?
Sure. I mean, uh, grand overview is we did not identify any conditions in soil or groundwater that need to be reported to Mass DEP at this time.
Okay, thank you.
The only, the only issue that I have is I looked at, uh, I looked at some of the, some of the documents that did come from, um, the Conservation Commission. And they were talking about an oily sheen to the water, something like this. Um, can anybody, oh, Mr. Oh, I see, Ms. Parsons, how you doing?
Yeah, I was, I was going to bring that up again. Um, yes, I saw that too. And I was in touch with, uh, Mass DEP about that issue. And in, um, Beta Group's report, and I'm going to quote them, it says a petroleum product sheen was observed on the south end of the vernal pool and rust stains were observed on the bottom vegetation of the vernal pool. We need to know if this petroleum is a leak and not iron bacteria. Now, I was in touch with Dan Crafton at M A D E P. And he had mentioned that it could be iron bacteria, but I do know of a superfund site that is an unlined, um, superfund site. And during the capping, they came across petroleum product and discovered that it was a leak of petroleum product in the landfill. So we need to know that for sure. And it just not pass it off as iron bacteria, because I've seen iron bacteria in streams. And they didn't have a sheen with them.
Mr. Abraham, can you speak to that?
Yep, so we can address certain concerns. There's, um, and again, I, I can't, it, it's just coming up as being as iPad on my screen, so I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, your name again, ma'am was?
Mary Passons.
Oh, sorry, Mary. So when we completed the phase one, part of it was a review of mass DEP listed sites that are in close proximity to the site. And there are several that were e- either still open or closed under mass DEP programming. And those surround the site mostly to the west into the north of the proposed development parcel, so on the opposite side of the wetland, which includes the Home Depot lot and includes, you know, lots that I believe are used as the hotel. Um, there was some pretty significant, you know, studies done on those properties. As far as work completed under the mass DEP program on our property, there's, you know, we did not identify any known, uh, mass DEP listed sites on this specific property.
Um, also, they, they, they noticed some clearing, some recent clearing on this site. And in the past, there has been clearing of wetlands on the site without an order of conditions. And EPA caught that and made them replace the wetlands on the site. So there may be a trust issue here of not being so trusting where that has happened before. And now we're seeing, they're seeing, um, clearing of this site in recent things and, um, solid waste here and there, which was probably a junkyard.
Yeah, so we identified areas of. Yeah. So we identified areas of, you know, discrete areas of solid waste mounding that were out there. There's some that are forested at this point. There is one area of buried tires that we've identified, and those were all called out in our reports as well. So a part of what our, you know, proposed source management practices would be under this project is to remove those debris piles that have been there since, you know, likely the 70s. As far as the as far as the clearing of, you know, sections of this parcel, there were large portions that were cleared, you know, for use as the junkyard that haven't, you know, regrown. As far as land that was cleared under our purview and investigations, we didn't clear any land. We had then, you know, advanced small diameter monitoring holes that are all, you know, obviously outside of the wetlands. So those are, you know, monitoring or assessment points which are allowed, you know, during the due diligence process.
Yes, but the owner of the land cleared wetlands.
Yeah, the current the current owner, the current owner of the property, Mr. Capriata. He's the one who did all that. He's the one.
He is not the current owner of the property. Mr. Rick Lincoln is the current owner of the property.
So when did that?
When did that change happen?
I couldn't tell you, but I'm not buying it from Mr. Cup. I'm not buying it from Ernesto.
Okay, all right. Far as last I knew, he was still listed on the on the webpage. So it is what it is. It's look at the registry deeds and see how that all works. But it's just the the guy that you guys that Mr. Lincoln bought the property off of is leaving you with that. You know, yeah, he's leaving you with a legacy here. So I just I you got. This is another reason why we're being excruciatingly particular about this because the previous owner, that several previous owners are leaving you guys with a they're leaving you.
We're hoping to bring an end to the bad reputation that is surrounding this site. We think it will be the best use of this site probably for decades. It'll be better than a junkyard and it'll be better than a patch of dirt. And we really wholeheartedly believe that.
All right. So let's 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 cap this off and say that, yes, environmental concerns do exist. Is there anybody else on here that wants to speak about something that we haven't talked about?
Yeah, Greg Knight.
Again.
20 Turner Road.
Night, I'm sorry. Can you? Can you say your address one more time? I apologize.
20 Turner Road.
Okay.
Two meetings ago, you had brought up at the paper road, which is now called Cedar Street. That dumps out on Turner Road.
I've got Turner Road. I see Turner Road. Uh, I see. Is that the is that the road that connects Turner to Colby?
Well, it doesn't connect anything. It's a paper.
No, I understand. It's a paper road. So so it's mathematically, it connects all three. It connects all three streets. Yes.
Okay, so is that going to be open to traffic from the development to come down Turner Road?
No, it's not. It's never going to be built.
We never have to worry about 250 or 300 cars a day coming down Turner Road.
There's no road. There will be no road there. We're going to put up. We're putting parking there. There'll be no thruway at all.
You don't have to worry about anybody. You do not have to worry about any any access from this development coming down Wilson Street, coming down Colby Street, or coming down Turner Road. Not that will never happen.
So they only have the one access to Pond Street, correct?
That's it.
That's correct.
That's it.
Okay.
Emergency emergency access only exiting off of Wilson Street. Or if it really comes down to it, you know, fire, you know, fire access. But that's the only that's the only access and it's 100% emergency only.
Okay, another question. The town has bylaws. I had seen that there were 19 bylaws that they're asking for waivers for.
Okay.
Am I mistaken?
Nope.
Okay. As the zoning board, your due diligence is you people put these bylaws in effect. A three-story building.
The town votes.
Correct. Okay. So why are we putting a five-story building in basically a residential area? And
Sir, I'm going to answer. I'm going to stop you right there. Sir, I'm going to stop you right there. Here's the here's the deal. Mr. Galvin, I got this. The problem is, is that through the 40 B process, this applicant can ask for a waiver from whatever they want. It's up to the zoning board to be able to determine if the ask is too great. So that's the deal. The applicant can ask to waive anything, virtually anything that they want. And it's up to us with the help of our professionals to figure out if this is going to work for the town or not. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Greg, what was your last? What was your last name again, sir?
I.
Mr. Knight, I appreciate I appreciate you speaking up. I didn't mean to sound hostile or anything like that. I just it's it's an aggravating situation for everybody and I appreciate.
No, it is. I just. Yeah, I've I've lived in this neighborhood for 34 years. And, you know, we deal with traffic tremendously on Pond Street all the time. And this is just going to add to the traffic.
And again, sir, again, because we've 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 addressed the fact that well, it's it's understood, sir. I just I'm trying to get through. I'm trying to get to some new stuff that the applicant hasn't heard before. So if there's anybody else in the in the public in in the public here that has something new to add to the discussion, I'd like to hear it. I see Rich H. What's your name, sir?
Hi, my name is Richard Howcomb. I live at 261 Turner Road.
All right, give me something new that we haven't talked about, sir.
Now, this building is 69 feet high. How are we going to deal with lightning strikes on this building? Some new topic, right? Is there? This is going to be a big lightning rod sticking up in the air. How is that being moderated? Is there some sort of lightning rods at the top of the building?
Uh, Mr. Ruble, I'm gonna I'm gonna go to hold on. I'm gonna go to Mr. Ruble on this one. It is. Is that something that you need to look at?
My my point being, if if they have to have some like one or two foot lightning rods on the building, that makes it over 70 feet. That makes it.
Sir, I understand. I understand your concern. And sir, I understand your concern. Mr. Ruble, can you? Is this something you can?
I I believe that would be that would be something that the electrical inspectors would take care of when they do their ground for the electrical systems. If not, that would be done with the would be done on my end with the third party inspection that I'm going to request. I'm going to ask for peer review on the project. They'll get a peer review.
But my point was leads to it's it's over 70 feet. You gotta. This is a whole nother way of looking at this project. It's got new rules if it's over 70 feet tall. It has to be reexamined and new specifications, rules.
That will be all done with with an engineer.
All right. So if so, what I guess what you're saying then is that if it needs, let's say, lightning rods. I didn't think that was a thing anymore. But let's say, let's say, if it needs a lightning rod and a lightning rod lengthens or heightens the 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 proposed height by more than a specific amount. This falls under a different construction category?
That's what I believe. Yes.
Mr. Ruble, does that make sense?
Yes, the engineer will design that. That will that will be taken care of.
Well, he'll design that. But I mean, if it's again, and Mr. Andronico, can you confirm that number? What's the what's the overall height of the building supposed to be?
I think right now it's 68. But just as a point of reference, if a lightning rod is required, which I'm not convinced it would be, it wouldn't count towards the height of the building and therefore would not trigger a code consideration.
Okay, Mr. Ruble, does that make sense?
Yeah, so the engineer will take care of that. If it is needed, the engineer will take care of it.
All right. If it's needed, but the point is, the point is, is I guess he's saying that if it's if 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 the lightning rod or a flagpole or something like that is added to the top of the building, it increases the height of the building. Is that correct? I don't feel like that's correct.
No, that does not affect the height of the building.
It does not. Okay, Mr. Mr. Howe. How can? So that answers that. That answers that question. You got anything else new?
Point number two. Has anybody talked to anybody in Abington? This is part of their water supply. You know, they're gonna their pipes gonna run dry if it's coming from this end of the pipe.
Again, that's a part of the water department. So it's it's a joint waterworks. It's not something it's, you know, you're not just talking to. They're not just talking to the Rockland side. You know, they're talking to the joint waterworks that takes into consideration Abington and Rockland. So while I'm not while while I can't say, have they talked to anybody in Abington? They're talking to to a department that that covers both towns. So that has to be taken into
They may have projects there that require additional supplies. Maybe they're gonna have the 40 B down there.
Exactly. That's understood. But the point is, is that they're talking to a department that covers both both towns. So it's up to the water department to take that into consideration. So again, water concerns, let's go to authority. Let's go to something different.
My last last point is the 40 Bs. I heard earlier a few meetings ago, we can't build 40 Bs on the airbase site. So I talked to Mr. Jim Young at the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, and he said, oh, the legislature gave us special permission to not allow 40 Bs on this on the airbase property. And I think, yep.
We know that.
What is wrong with this kind of thinking? We we have to talk to our representatives, our legislators at any level.
Sir, that doesn't it doesn't pertain to what we're dealing with. We can't. That has nothing to do with this.
Well, it does. If we want to put a 40 B in the town, we have a good place to put it. We just can't put it there.
Yeah, but that's my but it's under legislation. We can't. We have no choice. It's not like we can. We can't recommend that they go to. Okay, not at this point, sir. Not at this point. All right. Again, general public, I need something new that's going to that that's going to help this along. Does anybody got something that's good that that's new that because? Who who who's speaking, please?
I do. Um, Bonnie Valley, 411 Pond Street.
Okay, Ms. Valley, talk to me. What do you? What do you have to say?
So I'd like to. I have two concerns. One, I'd like to second the sidewalk concerns. I grew up on Pond Street. My family still lives there. My children are going to be walking along there. I've got two young boys who will likely, if this does end up developing, have kids, have friends up there. I would not want them going up there. I've walked up there as a kid as kids are gonna get hit. Knowing that we have this police, you know, evaluation recommending sidewalk, that we have a knowing that we're gonna have a much larger pedestrian population is a does the town have any liability if we don't put the sidewalks in? Number one. My second concern is, I don't know if this has been addressed, but with a five-story building, does the fire department have the proper apparatus to reach that height? And if not, how are we going to afford a new truck at 800 grand?
Ms. Andronico, can can we go back to you on this one? I believe that we've already addressed that with the fire department.
Sure, we have. So we spent a lot of time working with the fire department one on one to review the plans and make adjustments to accommodate their apparatus. And we received a letter prior to the last hearing or an email from the deputy fire chief stating that they were satisfied with the project as proposed. So to answer that, they feel as though that they have adequate equipment to address any and all emergencies at the site.
And in terms of liability?
I can't.
In terms of liability. Okay, but I mean, maybe for the board to think of.
Liability.
In terms of if we don't put in a sidewalk with all of that pedestrian traffic and knowing that we have a report out there advising that we need to have sidewalks there for safety. Does the town have any potential liability there if we don't put them in?
Mr. Galvin, I know you want to speak. I'm gonna I'm gonna go to you right now. I'm sorry.
Yes. So there's no liability on the behalf of the town. That's called a discretionary function, and there isn't any liability. Plus, if any land of the town is being used free of charge for recreational purpose, the town is also protected, as would any private property be owner protected for the free use of their land for recreational purposes.
Ms. Valley, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, ma'am. I know this is probably the first time that you've that you've spoken up here. So I just I wanted to make sure that that you were satisfied.
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Who else do we got here? Because it's getting late and we still have one other meeting that we have to try and deal with. So I'm going back and forth. I don't see anybody. So, uh-oh, I see. I see. I see Mrs. Parsons. She's 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 pointing at the camera. You got anything? You got one more thing to say? Hopefully, you're gonna say it loud because you're not. You're not mic'd. You don't have your mic on. So I can't hear.
Sorry, I was just gonna say that that no, there's no FODI be allowed on the basis. Special legislation to that. And there's a and you know what the reason is. FODI be, there's issues with the base that you don't want a FODI be coming in there and forcing the way in.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. All right, I'm going back to I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna end the the public comment at this point. All right, Mr. Galvin, we've gone over just about everything. I think we, one of the things that we have to talk about is ask for a written extension for the public hearing until mid-March 2021. Although, when it comes down to it, I think I got something via text from Tony. When it comes to the one year, the 180 days, we have until June. Is that correct?
No, these hearings began at a timeframe where the timeframe was told. Okay, the frame became untold on December 1st. And I'm thinking that we're getting close to the end of the hearing process and that it won't take that long. And you know, I I didn't hear the beginning of the meeting because I was tied up with something else. But my understanding is we're still waiting and we should have it actually any day now, the pro forma review. Ms. Barrett actually thought we might even have it for tonight apparently in time. We're going to share that with them. Ms. Barrett and I also talked about drafting some conditions that we would like your permission to have with a and share with the developer in a working group type relationship based on conditions that we have in other 40 Bs that have become almost standard form conditions with some particular ones here. And hopefully, if there's any issues that are left in the next meeting, that we can substantively discuss them and figure out whether they render the project uneconomic or have that debate and then close the public hearing process and draft the final decision.
Mr. Galvin, do I need a roll call vote to authorize the work group?
Uh, no, just the sense of the board is fine. Working groups are very normal. The developer has competent counsel and competent consultants that understand what this is all about. The board will not necessarily participate in that. This is something that's done amongst consultants and counsel. And then we'll propose them based on our past 40 B projects. But we won't presume that we know what the board's ultimately going to do with them, but discuss them with the applicant and see if we can come up with something that that works for our next meeting.
Board members, do you have any? Do you have any objection to this?
No, I'm good with that.
Hearing none. You're so authorized. All right, last thing we got to deal with is is continue. I need a vote for continuance. I need a date and time certain.
I think we're gonna have this pro. Mr. Rose, I believe we'll have this pro forma review completed probably this week. So I would suggest that if we, I didn't hear whether the applicant was gonna, I guess I heard the 40 of the 21 E material is going to be provided. Regardless of whether it was already provided, it's going to be provided again. Appreciate.
I don't think it was provided, but it's been requested. So.
Okay, all right. So look, and I think we need a date that's longer than two weeks out for the next continued hearing date.
Kim, you got your ears on?
I do. So.
I do. So the only dates we have, so March 16th is already booked for another meeting, and it was asked to be booked as the only meeting for that night.
Okay.
So I have March 2nd, or I have April 6th.
I'm happy with March 2nd. Mr. Galvin?
Works fine with me.
Board members? All right, Mr. Andronico?
Absolutely works for us.
Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion. I got a, I got a motion from Mr. Baker. What, what's that motion?
March 2nd. Continue the public hearing to March 2nd.
At 6:30 or 7:30 or, because we need a time.
6:30.
6:30? Okay, uh, board members, are you, now I need a, I need a second. So the, the motion was continue the, continue the public hearing to March 2nd at 6:30 PM. Uh, I got a motion, I need a second.
I'll second that.
I got a second from Mr. Haynes. I need a roll call myself. Yes, Mr. Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Tansey?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
All right. That's it. Mr. Andronico, you have my email address. You have my personal email address as far as I know at this point.
I do indeed.
If you need anything, contact me, and I'll do my very best to, to go on my own to get whatever you need, but it's
And you always have, and I appreciate that. So I'll, I suspect that we'll probably be in contact more over the course of the next month than usual, because I think that, you know, we're in the interest of trying to kind of pull all these pieces together. So I'll be in contact, and if you don't mind, I might just send you a list of confirming the things that you think you're looking for from me, and you can say go.
That's, that's fine. Again, you've got my personal, you've got my personal, just please do me a favor, always CC Attorney Galvin and Judy Barrett, just so we have a good work written, you know, work group around. And if, and Attorney Galvin, if I can be included in this work group, or if you think it's necessary to include me, I do whatever you gotta do.
Okay, very good.
All right, is everybody, everybody okay at this point? All right, well, I'm not, because I need to use the men's room. So I'm calling for a five-minute break on everybody. Is that okay?
Yeah, then we're gonna resume with the, the outstanding hearing.
Yes, sir. Oh, no, yeah, motion to adjourn at this point?
No, 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 no. Motion for a five-minute recess.
All right, motion for a five-minute recess. For me, yes. Mr. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Tansey?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Smoke him if he got him. I'll be back. Oh my God. Hello?
Mary, your computer's on.
Mr. Galvin?
Yes, hey, Tom, how are you?
Not too bad, yourself?
Very good, very good.
So, you know, you're getting, Bob Manzella's getting very hungry, and I don't know what you've done to him, but he's always telling me. How about you? Has he picked on you?
He's, he's picked on me a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
A masked man made a delivery to my office yesterday. He looked a little bit like Bob Manzella.
Yeah, I know. You heard about John, huh?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, isn't that sad?
Yeah, yeah, so.
I call him, I call him every day. I ask him if his wife, if his wife needs anything, just let me know. But he's, he's in a room with no windows.
Oh, boy.
No bathroom, no windows.
Tom, everybody is on this line, by the way, too. The public is still on this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The, so what do you think about the sober house?
Uh, I, I think I've indicated before, I think sober houses just in general are permissible. They have to comply with fire codes, and they have to comply with off-street parking requirements, same as any other single-family residents.
Yeah, that's what we did on the, the other one. This attorney doesn't seem to agree with us, though, so.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's called, that's considered congregate living. It's protected by the Fair Housing Act. And, you know, you have to treat them like any other single-family residents. And a lot of people don't understand that, but, you know, if the fire code and, you know, the code as it relates to single-family residences are impacted, he's gotta comply with it.
Yeah.
They're not exempt from zoning, they're just exempt from, they're considered congregate living, so.
Yeah.
No different from a single-family residence.
Yeah, yeah. So I sent a letter out to him. We'll see what happens.
Okay. Yeah, Tom, every community has these, and the issues are the same, although the towns are different, so.
Yeah. How's Tony been, okay?
Good. He was on the meeting a little while ago. I, I don't know if he can still hear us or not, so he may still be here.
What's that background you got?
That is Green Harbor on a sunny summer day. That's not what it looked like today when Brent Rock flooded, and the wind was blowing 30 or 40 miles an hour. And I guess last night around 1:30 in the morning at high tide, there was a couple of feet of water in Brent Rock, and it went all the way up to where the brand was, if you know where that is. So it's pretty, pretty gnarly down there.
Well, the view I got right now, the view, looks like you're sitting right in the middle of the marsh.
I'm, I'm in Marshfield. I, I was on a meeting, uh, last night with a gentleman from the Pembroke Planning Board, and he was in Hawaii. So his view was better than mine.
All right, board members, general public, I apologize. That was necessity. Since they put me on Jan, was it Januement and Jardiance? I think I drank about three gallons of water a day, between water and iced tea, and it's just not fun. Okay, everybody here? Mr. Baker's here, Tim's here, Mr. Galley's here. Okay. Mr. Tansey? Oh, hold on, I gotta, I gotta call Chuck.
Chuck's on.
Chuck's on. All right, I think we have everybody here. The question is, do we have, do we have the applicant here?
I believe he's on. I got a message that he was calling back, so.
Okay. All right, I don't want to start this until I know he's here.
Time that perfect.
Dry. Nice, Mr. Baker Jr. and Mr. Galley, I got your, I got your emails. Thank you. All right, I also texted him. I told him, I told, I told Mr. McGee I'd text him to let him know that we're, that we're waiting for him, so.
I think, I think he tried to call in.
That's the case. He should be, he should be hearing what's going on. I got a participant one. And they've been unmiked. Lisa, you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you see participant one?
Yes, it came in as a phone number, a 1-508 number. So I renamed him as participant one.
All right, is the, I see a line going through his phone, though.
Right, I'm asking to unmute. But they should still be able to hear.
All right, I don't think that's his phone.
Here comes a phone number right now. An iPhone is coming in right now.
Okay. That's him. I think. Two.
He's gonna unmute him. You gotta unmute him if that's him.
I don't know if that's him. Not based on the phone number I got, unless he's calling in from a different phone. Mr. Galvin, you missed the, you missed the terrorist attack.
I, I heard that someone was playing a video during your
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that was, that was, that was awesome.
And there's no way we identify those?
Is there any way we can find out whether that was, in fact, Mr. McGee?
He just sent a message.
iPhone.
And again, I, I texted him on the number that I've been calling, that I've been going back and forth with him on, so. And I, I, again, I apologize, and I wish, I wish, I wish Mr. McGee was on here. I just
There's, there's one that says somebody's iPhone.
Yeah, I just, maybe, maybe it's my own personal feeling, but somebody's asking for, somebody's asking, you know, they're asking the zoning board for a something. I just, I feel like, I feel like he needs to be here. He needs to be here to formally ask this. I know we've gone over the, I know, Mr. Galvin, I know you've gone over with him, but
He texted, he texted, he texted that he was dialing in, so that's all I could tell you.
Oh, it says that the, Kim just texted and it said that the, the, the number next to it is the meeting number, not necessarily the phone number. So I can understand that.
So can we unmute that person and figure out whether that's Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I've been sending a message, and I'm muting, but
Yeah.
That's all I can do is ask them.
He just sent a message through to us that he's trying to get in.
Nobody's in the waiting room as we speak.
There he is.
Yep, that's him.
Yeah, no, I see him. I can't, I can't hear him.
Phone number?
Kevin, I see you, but I can't hear you.
Star six.
And we lost.
I think he's still here. He's under that iPhone number.
Yeah. Hold on, I think that's him red. Hold on, I think he's calling. Hey, Kevin, is that you? Turn this up here. Hey, Kevin Spid, I got you on speakerphone. Speak up.
All right, yeah. I was on the video. I saw you on the desk. I had my sunscreen. I just couldn't get, I couldn't get any voice.
Can it, let me ask a question. Board members, can you hear him? Yeah, I can.
I can hear him.
Yeah, I can hear him.
All right. Everybody can hear him. Mr. McGee, I've got you, I've got you on my phone, on speakerphone.
I can hear him.
All right, if this, if this works for, if this works for everybody, I mean, can we consider this, Mr. McGee attending the meeting?
Yeah, he can dial in, as long as he can hear us and we can hear him.
And he's on my cellphone right now. He called me on my cellphone, and I got it on speakerphone next to my computer, so.
So keep it close to your microphone, and, uh, you can let us. Okay.
All right, Mr. McGee, one last time, just speak up for the record, just to let, to let everybody know that you're here.
Okay, Kevin McGee, I'm in for the meeting.
All right, does everybody hear him?
Yes.
All right, uh, let me just get back and do, do, here it is. Okay. We've already opened the meeting, so I'm not worried about that. Let's see, remotely conducted public remand hearing on the application of Kevin R. McGee for use variance pursuant to, pursuant, pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10 and Section 15, and our Section 415-89.1 to operate a used car sales business at the property located at 511 Union Street. The owners of the property, the owner of the property is Kevin R. McGee, and this hearing is held based on an agreed remand in the matter of Kevin R. McGee versus Rockland Zoning Board of Appeals, Plymouth Superior Court, case number 2083 CV 00013. The site is located in the R3 and R4 zoning district on Rockland Assessors Map, parcel 34 204-0. Copy this application material, plans, and other documents are available upon request from the town clerk. By dialing the town clerk's number, everything's good. Okay, Mr. Galvin, just kind of refresh everybody's memory.
Yes, could I share my screen? Yes, could I share my screen with whoever allows the screen sharing?
I think that's Lisa.
Yep, all set.
Okay. Okay. All right, members of the board, hopefully you can see the plan that I have here. This was a revised site was presented to the Board of Appeals back in December of 2019. And this is the property at 511 Union Street. Which is the site presently of Mr. McGee's repair, car repair business. Mr. McGee filed an application for a use variance in the months preceding that December. Came up with a original plan that the board rejected because it didn't have enough detail. Asked him to come up with a more detailed plan of exactly what he wanted to do. And gave him some indication of things that you wanted him to show on the plan. He presented this plan to us at the beginning of December of 2019. And when the board voted on his variance, this was the current plan. And. The way I understand the plan, the presentation by Mr. McGee was. That the spaces listed with the D symbol in it would be display spaces for used cars that he wanted to sell from the property. The spaces with M on it were miscellaneous spaces, but spaces that he would like to sell cars on. The spaces with C on it were customer spaces. And there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There were three employee spaces on the southerly side of the property and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 repair spaces. Mr. McGee told the board that he would pave the entirety of the site. He indicated that he would stripe the parking lot in the same manner that we've required other used car dealers that operate throughout the town to do so. He would install concrete bumper stops at each space. So that cars would not be. Would be built properly in a space and that they wouldn't intrude into buffer zone areas, particularly along the northerly and southerly areas. Where there are residential properties. He indicated that he would put in and install a concrete dumpster pad in the rear of the property. Which is an area where he already had a dumpster, but it wasn't enclosed with a fence. And anybody that has driven by there in the past. Number of years understands that the condition of the property was, you know, not what I think people were very happy about. But what Mr. McGee had done even prior to the last. Time he asked for a variance was he had cleaned it up extensively and indicated regardless of what happened, that he was gonna pave the area. So this plan represented what the board basically asked him to do. In December, I think it was December 19th, the board rendered a 3-2 decision in favor of granting the variance. With three members in favor and two opposed, which was not a sufficient vote to grant the variance. And Mr. McGee appealed that to the Superior Court, which is, is right. During the context of the case. Mr. McGee engaged in some discussions with me. To see if there were some things that he omitted from his plan or conditions that we felt might be material enough. To, to cause some discussion on settlement. Superior Court expected us to have that settlement discussion. And we had some executive sessions and we gave a proposal to Mr. McGee. With a number of conditions. And we've had over the past. Year and a half with the pandemic time excluded, the courts were shut down for a period of time. Some back and forth, and I've been back with you since. And there was one condition that we proposed that basically that the property revert to residential use in the event that he ceased to sell used cars there. And that was not an agreed condition. But he proposed a, he made a counterproposal that he'd be allowed to repair cars, but he limited the repairs. So that the repair vehicles were properly aligned in the spaces that were shown here. So in the event that he made a go of this used car business and he didn't wish to continue, he could go back to. Repairing vehicles, but he would do it with the cars aligned like they are so that the property remained an improvement and not. And not be in the past condition, which was upsetting. And the board probably does recall that we actually brought in. Actually, Mr. Ruble and I and McGee prevailed in that enforcement action and was allowed to continue to repair cars. And because it was nonconforming, there wasn't any. Required order to the site. As a matter of fact, there wasn't really any formal site plan. So. This plan now represents what Mr. McGee has offered to agree to. It represents, I think, by all accounts, a great significant improvement over what was there in the past. He's already cleaned it up, so it's not, it wasn't conditioned on anything that we would ordinarily allow him to do. And he has indicated that he could live with the condition that if he doesn't sell used cars, that he would. Then agree to limit his repair use and abide by the conditions that are shown on the site plan. Which we've never had the ability to force him to do. So with that, I brought that back to the board and we all agreed to look at this again. And what I have done for tonight is I sent to Mr. Rosa. A list of our standard used car conditions. As well as some conditions that would hypothetically relate to this specific use, and there's 17 of them in total. That if the board is willing to reconsider this project and grant. The variance. I expect Mr. McGee would accept based upon discussions in the past. And. They're, they're fairly rigorous. There's no room for misinterpretation. If there's a breach of those conditions, we now have a site plan that we can enforce where we've never had that. I think Mr. McGee would be the first one to tell you that he and I didn't agree. Probably that even today was a Tuesday in the past. But he has done what he said he was gonna do. He's developed an appropriate site plan and. He has indicated that he is willing to abide by that site plan and that additional condition that. If he elects not to sell used cars here, should he be granted this variance, he would agree to keep the site orderly. Keep the property in the condition that you see in this plan. And. The only work that remains here, I guess, is to install the concrete dumpster pad, which. Obviously he can't do right now with the ground frozen, but he could do it as soon as weather permits of the springtime and. You know, I think that's the issue for the board now. You know, I happen to say that. I think Mr. McGee would not disagree with the outstanding history of disputes with the town and. Mr. McGee has for the first time taken overt steps to try to do the right thing here on this property and. I, I think he's made it public to other people in town that he wants to get along with the town. And he feels like the, the best use of this property now is as a used car dealership and. The used car dealership that's shown on this plan, I think, would fairly and accurately represent a great improvement over what we've had there for many years. So. I, I agreed to the remand with him and we're back here tonight. He meets all the requirements of zoning. The only thing that. Doesn't exist now, and that's why I didn't really make a big deal of it, is Mr. McGee owns the property that's located. In the upper right hand, it's called the existing dwelling 495. And if at any point he ever sold 495 and didn't. He, he could need, he'll need to create a buffer zone in the back of the property, which he can do by either giving a portion of 495 over. To 511. Or reconfiguring the property at 511. So other than that, he's got a buffer on the northerly and southerly side, which he's agreed to. Maintain in a natural state. There was a box truck up against the property line at 497. Union Street and he's removed that. And he's gonna relocate the existing chain link fence to the property line. And, you know, he's basically done what we've asked him to do. When we were here before. You might remember there was a, a police officer who was a butter. I believe his name was McDonald, Robert McDonald. Robert McDonald, and I think at least one other neighbor spoke in favor of this project. And then there was another gentleman from another. Portion of town that was in the used car business that spoke in favor of Mr. McGee and. There wasn't opposition in the past. That doesn't mean there's no opposition at all. But. Mr. McGee went a long way to try to resolve our concerns, so it seemed to make sense to take a look at it again.
Thank you, Attorney Galvin. Mr. McGee, did you hear everything that Attorney Galvin said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, first and foremost, I'd like to, I'd like to commend you, sir. The, the, the property condition right now. It, it, it's pretty damn nice. You went above and beyond at this stage. You know, before you even got a, before you even got, you know, us to say yea or nay again, you went above and beyond and you cleaned up the site. And I think. I don't think anybody that, anybody in town that's driven by can, 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 can deny the fact that it's. In a heck of a lot better state than, than it's ever been. So I'd like to commend you and I'd like to thank you.
A lot of people stopped in and told me that.
So I'm not the first one to tell you. So that's a, that's a good thing. The one concern that I know I have. And I think the board members have talked about this before too. The reason that we had that original condition in there about reverting back to residential. It was a protection of the town. And again, somebody, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. But I thought it pertained to, if you broke any of the conditions as set forth by the decision. Then it would revert back. It was, it was a protection for the town, not, you know, not a, you know, not a. You know, if you revert, you know, if you, you know, if you decide not to sell cars. That's my, that's my big concern at this point is the protection of the town. You've gone above and beyond, so I believe that, I, I believe that you want this to succeed. But in the end, it was more of a protection for the town if for some reason, something happens and. You break one of the, you start breaking conditions and we've got no, you know, we've got no kind of recourse. But. Since I started reading these conditions, I think we actually do have recourse now. What I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up to the board members. They're gonna ask you questions. They're probably gonna have some questions for you. So just be prepared to answer them. Kim, can you do me a favor and can you remind me of who was voting the last time on this? This may have even been prior to you.
I can tell you who it was because I remember reading the decision.
Okay.
Yourself. It was Mr. Tansey. It was Mr. Hessian. Mr. Baker.
Yeah.
And I forgot the name of the member. He's no, Dave Sossier.
Sossier.
Yes.
All right. Well, we've got, we've got a full board. It doesn't, obviously it can't be the same people.
It doesn't have to be the same people because this is a new public hearing with. Correct.
All right. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna designate myself, Mr. Tansey, Mr. Haynes, Mr. Hessian. And Mr. Baker Jr. As voting members on this. So that takes care of that. I've already spoke my piece. I'm gonna go to Mr. Tansey. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Actually, I, I, I do not have any questions for the, for the applicant. I'd like to commend the applicant on cleaning up the site. It does look. A thousand percent better. My understanding of the, the conditions were the same as yours, Mr. Chairman. But as I understand. As I understand it, Mr. Galvin has proposed some. Some other conditions that will safeguard the town. And I have, I've reviewed those and I don't have any issues or questions regarding them.
All right, Mr. Haynes.
And clear if the. The buffer zone. If some of it is paved, I think, or not paved, I'm just not really clear. I'd just like to clarify whether the, the buffer. The 10-foot buffer left and right, whether those are landscaped or to be landscaped buffer zones.
So, Mr. McGee, can you answer that question?
I can answer it, Mr. Rosa.
Mr. Mr. Galvin, if you can answer it.
Yeah. So this site was pre-existing nonconforming. Okay. And it had. Areas that were paved right up to the edge of the property. The history goes back into the 50s. They used to have, it was a car, it was a gas station at one point. That it was a U-Haul business. It didn't become a used car business until the 80s. When a prior board granted a special permit. To Mr. McGee's predecessor to sell used cars. In addition to the repair, in addition to repairing vehicles that were on there. Mr. McGee bought the deal, bought the business from that prior grantee. Came back before the board to modify the proposed dealership that he wanted. And, you know, it's just never, it was never. It was never laid out on a, on a very clear site plan. There was a plan, but it was. One, one, one hundredth of what you see in front of you. Okay? And there were some conditions added to Mr. McGee's request for modification, but you could never tie it to a plan. So the buffer zones that you see there, I don't think he's proposing any change. But where there isn't any improvements made and they're in the white area. He's not proposing any changes to the buffer zones there and will maintain those areas.
Gotcha. So the, so the part, the pavement. The truck is gone, but the pavement remained.
Yeah, the, if you can see my arrow on the screen right now. The box truck was located in approximately this location. And Mr. McGee told the board that it, that basically the neighbor didn't mind it because it kind of obstructed the view of his property or vice versa. But he has removed that truck. And I don't think it's paved all the way there, but you can see. His intention is to create a buffer zone there and put the concrete stop so there'll actually be that buffer. And he's agreed that that buffer zone would, you know, be left in its current condition.
Great. So no other changes there. Great. I'm fine with that. No other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Mr. Hessian.
My, again, first of all, I want to commend Mr. McGee. Great job. I grew up in Rice Ave, so I'm familiar with the property. I guess my original question, my first question is for Mr. Galvin. And it goes back to the previous meetings. You have no issue with the designation of M for miscellaneous?
Well, in a proposed condition, Mr. Hessian. And when we were in front of, when Mr. McGee was in front of us back in 2019. He actually asked if he could use the M spaces as display spaces to get a total of 15 cars. And the board actually told him it didn't have a problem with that. So in a, in a proposed condition. I have listed that there shall not be more than 15 used cars and small trucks displayed for sale. And those cars and trucks shall be kept in the spaces marked with D and M on the approved site plan, as well as. In the two spaces in the two garage bays, which the board knew that there's two garage bays there and said it could have two cars that were display cars parked inside the garage.
Okay, I'm cool with that. The other thing is that the applicant previously testified and installed a proper floor drain. Has that been done?
My, my understanding is that he did install a floor drain.
Been inspected?
I don't know whether it has. I think we'd have to ask him that. And you know what? That's not on my conditions, but. That is a condition that the board did ask for. And I think Mr. McGee was agreeable if that was what the requirement of the code was. And someone pointed out how that was a new code provision. So maybe Mr. McGee could comment on that. And someone pointed out how that was a new code provision, so maybe Mr. McGee could comment on that.
Mr. McGee, can you comment on that? Did you put a floor drain in? He was told, he says he was told he did not have to, so he did not do that.
Okay, we told you, is I'm reading it. He said the applicant previously testified that he wouldn't stop, install a plop of floor drain to contain the contaminants. That's the only reason I asked the question.
No, that's, that's understood. Mr. McGee, who told you you didn't have to put it in? Did everybody hear that?
No.
I I think he was saying that he discussed it with Attorney Azak, who indicated that it wasn't required, and that's sum and substance of what he said. You know, it, it, what you could say is if it's required as a matter of law to have a floor drain, a floor drain will be installed.
Okay, no, like I said, I'm, I'm cool with that. I'm just reading what, what he previously stated.
I, I like that, and I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be a determination that Mr. Ruble's gonna have to make. Because I'm only assuming he's gonna have to admit, he's gonna have to do some sort of inspection on this even prior.
My understanding is that he wanted to detail cars there. And if he's gonna detail cars, he probably does need the floor drain. Part of the repair work, when you sell a used car, you're gonna clean it up. And I think he wanted to do that on the site. So I think he's gonna need a floor drain there to contain the runoff from, from detailing cars.
Okay, and the last question, the last question I had is, and again, for this, guess for you, Mr. Galvin, has there ever been a twenty-one E done on that site?
Not to my knowledge.
Can we make a condition that if it's ever transferred, that a twenty-one E be conducted?
I can.
Hold on, guys, hold on, guys. Mr. Mr. McGee is saying something about this. All right, so Fred, I thought he was gonna talk about the twenty-one E, but he's saying that he's not going to be doing any details and any onsite detailing there. So I don't know if that's what triggers the need or necessity for a floor drain.
I think that was.
Mr. Tansey, I know you're, you're a stickler on this one.
No, I, I, I think the conditions are adequate. That was.
All right, so you're okay, you're okay without the floor drain?
Mr. Rosa, as to the twenty-one E. It's typically when someone that owns a property like this, a gas station or a used car business or where they do automotive repair, sells their property, the buyer, who becomes strictly liable for any contamination issues, has a twenty-one E done. And if they don't, they still own the liability. So I don't know whether there is a problem or isn't, but any prudent buyer is gonna do it on their own before they decide to buy. And if there's an issue, I'm sure they'll work it out in the price or whatever else they have to do.
Well, you're the attorney, so if you're happy, I'm happy.
So I wouldn't worry about the, yeah, I don't think we need it.
Okay, if you're, you're the attorney, if you're happy, I'm happy, and that's all I have.
Last, one more, one, one more. I just wanna go back to Mr. Tansey. I know you're a stickler on this floor drain. Are you okay without it?
Yeah, if, yeah, the indication is that this property has been grandfathered. Apparently, another attorney has weighed in on that or looked into it. So, and you know, the council, the, the condition that our town council said will cover it, I mean, if it's required by law, then he's gonna have to comply with law. And it'll probably be something that Tom Rubel will, you know.
He'll look into.
Weigh in on it, or it would be up to his judgment.
Okay, Mr. Baker Jr.?
I have no questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mr. Gally, where are you?
Right here.
Questions?
Well, I just, I'm a curiosity more. I was just curious. I, I know that, I thought from one of the previous meetings, we talked about if he was selling cars, he could only repair so many cars, like maybe just repair the cars he was selling. Was that just a limitation because he had so many spaces for sale and just a few spaces for employees and customers and repair? Like, I'm just curious.
I can explain it too.
Yes, please.
So back a long time ago, an argument was made successfully, I think, that Mr. McGee could not repair vehicles other than the vehicles that he was selling, okay? And that was at the time when he had both the cars and repair vehicles. He then stopped selling used cars for a period of time, which resulted in an abandonment of that use. It was at a time, a difficult time in Mr. McGee's life. He's going through some personal problems with his ex-wife, things like that. And he did stop selling them. And there was an argument, dispute about that, and that could all resolve. But he preserved the right to repair vehicles. And we brought an enforcement action against them as the town, and Mr. McGee hired counsel, and we fought it and tried it in the land court. And he preserved and was allowed to continue to repair vehicles without any type of limitations at all on the property. Regardless of whether he sold them or he didn't sell them. So he's got that right now. So I think that all he's looking to do is scale back the repair business to only having those five spaces plus whatever the fix. And the rest of it's gonna be his used car business. And he's agreed as a potential condition that if he doesn't like the used car business after getting back into it and is then going to only repair vehicles, he'll keep it so that it's limited to the spaces that are on the site then. And it, that is a thousand percent improvement to what it has been and what he could legally continue to do.
That sounds good.
Uh, Mr. Baker, the OG, talk to me.
I have nothing.
All right, I appreciate it, sir. Here's the, here's, here's the crux of it. He's looking to have, I think it's a total, when it comes to, when it comes to the variance, we're voting on the variance. We have nothing to do with the used car license, the used car license at this point, Mr. Galvin, is that correct? Or is it still?
That's correct. That's a permit that issues, if at all, from the selectmen.
Okay, so if we, if he's looking to have, again, we're only voting on the variance. So if he's looking to have a certain number of cars, we're saying fifteen, a total of fifteen unregistered cars. So, and again, those are the ones that are supposed to be for sale, all right? If for some reason, he decides to stop selling used cars and only go back into the repair situation, the question is, how many unregistered vehicles is he gonna be allowed to have on the property?
Well, right now, there's, right now, there's no limitation. He can get as many as he can get in there, and he's had, I don't know, upwards of thirty cars there. What he's offered to do as a condition is limited to the five repair spaces and the fifteen sales spaces, so it would be twenty cars on the site, plus his customers and employees.
Yep. Okay, so he could, he would be allowed to have twenty unregistered vehicles onsite?
Well, he's agreed that he's not gonna keep or store unregistered vehicles on the site that are not for sale.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, Mr. McGee would tell you, and I remember him telling me and the land court judge that tried the case, that there was a car that came in, someone was, I think, tragically even killed in the car. And it took someone years to actually develop the title for this property, for this car. He kept it there as a favor to the family and just couldn't get rid of it. So so, I, I, again, he's agreeing that he's not gonna take those types of cars anymore. He's only gonna take in cars that he can actually repair.
Condition number fifteen, the shelf keeping, storing of unregistered vehicles that are not for sale. Okay, so I see that. All right. We went through everybody, so I'm gonna open this up to the general public. And Mr. Red, actually, hold on, Mr. Ruble, you didn't weigh in. Are you, how do you feel about this? You know he's there.
You hear me, Rob?
Yeah, I hear you. Is, are you, are you happy at this point?
Yeah, I think Kevin did a great job. I do know that that code regards to the drain, that would be a plumbing code. That would be, have to do with Bill Callahan. I will, I will give him a call tomorrow and, and get his output on it. And I will get back to, I'll get back to you on how I make out with the plumbing code.
I can tell you this, we're gonna put it in there as a condition that if it's required by law, then or if it's required by law or plumbing code, whatever it is, he's gotta put it in there, saying if it's required, it's required. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that it, I can't deal with that. If you're happy with that, then I am gonna open it up to, actually, before I do that, because there are a lot of people on here, Mr. McGee, you, you hearing everything that's being said? All right, are you okay with everything as it stands? Okay, now I'm gonna open it up to the general public. Is there anybody in the general public that would like to speak in favor on this? Is there anybody that wants to speak opposed? Hearing none. Grab my cheat sheet here. Hearing none, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the open portion of the meeting. I need a roll call vote for that?
Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna need a roll call vote. I need a, I need a motion to close. So I got a so moved, I got a second someplace?
A second.
I got a second. I need a roll call. Myself is a yay. Mr. Baker Jr.?
Yes.
Mr. Tansey?
Yes.
Mr. Hessian?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
All moved. All right, Mr. McGee, you hear me? All right, here we go. The board, the board will deliberate tonight, and you're welcome to hang on the line. I'm not gonna hang up on you. You'll receive a decision in the mail with a date stamp, twenty-one days from the date stamp. On the decision, go to the town clerk's office and request a certificate of no appeal. If no one has appealed, the town clerk will give you a certification and a copy of the original decision. You're gonna take those to the registry of deeds and have them recorded. One of the conditions is always to show the building department proof of recording.